Again, we have to do audible roll calls, so I'll go through that. Rosemary Eva?
Here. Here.
Susan Bill here. Adam Raposa?
Here.
Amanda Souza?
Present.
Dave Perry?
Yeah.
And Peter Bramonte?
Here.
All right, and Stu Hardy may be here. Christine Shay and Janice Gomes are absent. We also have Joe Cardello from Steer Engineering. We have Mike Marcello as the solicitor tonight. And Rick Rogers from DBW may be able to join us. He said he had two other meetings tonight, so he will try and get your possible submitted comments also, so hopefully we can get his input or questions. Anyway, okay. Well, thank you very much, everybody, for coming in tonight. Item one is administrative officer report. For the August AO report, you have that. Jennifer is here, our administrative officer, and also Tara, of course. So we have the August AO report. Now, sorry, Jennifer, can you just give people a little more information on the mandros, the administrative subdivision, just so everybody understands?
Oh, yes. So, oh, is, oh, is that the DEM?
Uh, yes, yes.
Yes, so I didn't, um, they're, they're making a very, they're taking a very large parcel and making it, I don't have it in front of me, so, and they're making it very small to just around the house. And they're donating the land to DEM, and it's going to be attached to another parcel that they, that has been given to DEMs.
Where is it located?
I don't have the map.
No, and I don't have the plat in the lot. Maybe perhaps in perenns in the future, you could put like a little description, you know, like Crandall Road, East Road, wherever.
Sure.
I mean, so that the layman knows where it is.
Sure, I, I actually didn't receive, I received it electronically, but I told them that they had to paper copies, and so I didn't officially get them yet, so.
Oh, okay.
Can I interrupt?
Who is it?
There.
This is Tara, so this pro, so this project is plat 601 lots 101 and 102.
I understand Tara, but whereabouts in town is it? But if you don't have those plat and lots available to you and you're reading a report, I was just suggesting maybe you could put, you know, a little bit of a
Sure, it's off Lake Road, just trying to give you some info now.
Thank you.
Okay, so what is it, it was a house with a, I mean, it was a lot with a house on it, so they're cutting it out for a small plot?
Yes, so they're changing the lot line from, I believe it's like a very large, like a, I don't know how large it is, to around four acres, from like 100 to four acres. What I'm remembering.
Right.
I definitely will tell you more once I get it.
All right. Okay, yeah, just a little more information, but I just, yeah, it would be good to know what that was in reference to, but it's planned being donated to DEM?
Yes, yes.
I think it was called wetlands, if I recall, mostly.
Yeah, yeah.
So it wasn't buildable, and that's why they're
They're just, yeah. So there's, so there's two other things that I, that are part of the report. October 8th, the town council would like to have a joint meeting with the planning board. So let me know if you're able to attend or not.
What was the date again, please?
October 8th, which is a Thursday, about three weeks from this coming Thursday.
Can you tell them what it was to be about?
Um, it is about, possibly about solar and about density. The pressures of housing coming to Tiverton. So it might be a lot on the agenda. And Trish, the town council president, asked me to discuss about housing pressures and different tools that we can use to, you know, prepare for these pressures. For instance, transfer of development rights, larger impact fees, and possibly a lower density in South Tiverton. And that's, and then hopefully our solar ordinance as well, that was given to them in November. So.
Right, this was gonna be more of a workshop, wasn't it?
Yes, yes, it is a workshop. It needs to be posted so that the town council and the planning board can talk together. I guess it's gonna be Zoom, because that's how we do everything now. A little difficult, but we'll trudge through.
Do you need us to reply, Jennifer, as to our
Yeah, yeah, you can do it, you can just write me an email, you don't have to do it now.
I just got a question. You know, why don't they wait until October 8th to act on anything, when three weeks after might not even be on the council?
You know, I don't know.
They have a whole new council there, and with totally different ideas.
I know.
Very true.
I thought we, when I spoke to Trish, she was talking about doing it in September, which then maybe, because then, once they get it, I mean, the, the point of the workshop was to go through our solar ordinance that we finished last November and sent to them, was to explain it to the council so that they would be, have some understanding of what we did and why we did it, to prepare them for the public hearing process. But now I'm wondering, since it's in October, even if we had that now, by time it was advertised, it'd have to be advertised for three weeks, because it's an ordinance, it's gonna be a whole new council. And I'm almost wondering now if we should just suggest we wait until a new council is installed, because otherwise, we're gonna end up explaining it again. I don't know.
I think waiting would be a good idea, or kind of
I agree with Dave 100%, we should just hold wait, doesn't make any sense.
Well, I was asked by the town council president to, to do this, so.
I know, so, yeah, when, when I spoke to her, it was gonna be in September, but now it's postponed till October, which, I mean, I, I think, you know, if we want to get back to her, just ask her if she really feels strongly that she wants to go forward with this now. But I almost wonder, wonder if it would make more sense. I mean, if you wanted to talk about the density
This request is coming from Trish?
Yes.
But if we wait, if they want to discuss the housing, it makes more sense to wait and hold the solar until a new council, so we don't have to expect it a second time.
Didn't we do a build-out analysis before?
Pardon?
Didn't we do a build-out analysis before and had justification before this? Way back.
I don't know, that predates me, but I don't know if that was, that's what's in the comp plan? I mean, that tells you how much, I mean, those numbers are in the comp plan, like what the potential for build-out is. And I think that, I don't know if that's what she was looking at, or if there was something more detailed, if there is, I'm not aware of it, I mean, it's possible.
I agree with Dave and Peter and the rest. I think this is the 11th hour. Waste.
Has Trish even run? I'm surprised she would request that. I don't think she was gonna try and get elected this, this season.
She is not running, it was a meeting that I was at, that the, that the town council asked me to come. And at that town council meeting, I was asked to do this, this workshop. And the reason it wasn't done in September was because of the little town meeting, and then November will be the elections, so they thought October would be the best. And they thought October 8th, in case it would have to go to October 15th as well.
I mean, I wonder if, if they want to do the workshop on the density and housing, and if that also takes in the stuff that Stu had been, has been talking about for the south end of town. I would just ask, take it back to her and ask her if she's, if we postponed the solar for now.
Okay.
Because otherwise, if three or four new members come in, they're not gonna have, if they don't have the information, either it's gonna lead to a confusing public hearing or uninformed decisions.
That sounds good, yeah.
I was hoping to get this done with this council, but it just, it's gotten too late. So, yeah, I guess if everybody can let Jennifer know, if they're available, that Thursday, I think we will have the meeting October 6th, so it would be two nights after our October 6th meeting. Then it would be more of a workshop that has to do with, is she asking you to present the information on it?
Yes, yes, I'm making a PowerPoint.
Okay. Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Than me, or someone else, but then, I don't know, if we, if we incorporate some of Stu's proposal
Sure.
Good as well, I mean, hopefully on the 6th, we can get that ad hoc committee formed and get started on that. Does that sound all right, Stu? I see your
Yes, can, can you hear me?
Yes, excellent.
Excellent.
Okay.
I, just a little bit of background information. I think Tricia is thinking of housing developments, putting an unreasonable burden on the water and wastewater situation in areas of town with a very high water table. That's based on my private conversations with Trish Hilton. So I, I think that's more germane than simply looking at the build-out analysis, with, which Trish actually wrote as chair of the committee that was working on the land use chapter in the comprehensive community plan.
Unless, you know, she has a strong objection and wants us to go ahead and present the solar, but if she's all right, if that's postponing it.
Yeah.
Because there's no way it'll get advertised with a public hearing before the election, or it'll be on the eve of the election, so.
That makes sense, I think she'd be fine with that.
Okay, all right. All right, is there anything else, or did anybody else have questions or comments on the administrative officer report for August?
No.
Okay, all right, so we'll go on to the meat of the evening. Number two, Tiverton Planning Board, oh, first of all, the chairman review of planning board policies. Well, I guess there were, there were just a couple of points I wanted to touch on, I'll do these briefly. One is, has to do with continuing education. In our bylaws, there is caveat that we strongly encourage four hours of continuing education a year. Then there's the other one that's for the stormwater that is required by the state now, it's mandatory, and that is two hours every two years. Those are the things that Tara's been writing, emailing you about. They're like little, 10-minute or 15-minute little episodes, or six of them. I think there's a couple of people that have completed them, but everybody needs to do that. I think part of your active role on the planning board is to do some continuing education. I think Jennifer probably will get things in through her email, and I think she could, like webinars, and once, you know, life becomes a little more sane, you can attend coursework on it, but a lot of it's just, you know, educating yourself as a planning board member to either state laws, state rules, DEM regulations, or whatever, so I strongly encourage people to, to work on that, and it was also written into the bylaws that that would be a consideration for your reappointment to the planning board, because we wanted people that were actively engaged and learn, you know, learning, educating yourself through the process. So it's strongly encourage you, if you, if you've taken that the one on stormwater, sea level rise, just let Tara know that information, so she can keep the file on it. Okay, then, a couple of things that were mentioned, I've lost track, a couple of meetings ago that I just wanted to address. One, a comment was made that the planning board tends to vote things down, deny things. Something in particular was mentioned was, in light of the Carpi and Auto project, the big project. I wanted to clarify for people that are new to the planning board that this isn't correct. The planning board, did the comp, we approved the comprehensive community plan amendment, the zoning change, and we did a master plan approval when it went to the town council from the zoning change and the comprehensive community plan amendments, that's where it was denied. So just for historical clarification, if anybody ever mentions it, that project was denied by the council. Because once they, they did not accept the comprehensive community plan, that killed the entire project, it couldn't go forward. The other thing I wanted to mention that has come up, I just want, as a, it's not a caution, but just to be aware that we need to be neutral when, as we hear applications. We need to hear all of the evidence presented by the applicants before we reach our conclusions. People are entitled to their opinion, but it should be based on subdivision regulations, zoning, comprehensive community plan. Because what could happen, and I was put in that position very early on in my career here, if anything is misconstrued, if you, to the members of the public, or during a planning board meeting at the beginning of a process of a public hearing, or review of an application, express a strong opinion, one way or the other, you could be asked to recuse, because you've predetermined the outcome before you've heard the evidence that's presented. You know, I would do that consultation with the solicitor, and if that was the case, that could jeopardize the application for appeal, you would be asked to recuse. So I just want to bring that up again to caution people. That includes speaking to neighbors, to friends, Facebook, or at public meetings. If you voice strong opinions one way or another, too, you know, early in the process, it could restrict you from participating and voting on an application. And I think that was it, okay. All right, so let's go on to, does anybody have any questions and doubts or comments, or, I'm not trying to lecture, I just want to clarify points to help us all get through the processes. Because we do end up with controversial projects at times, and we need to keep our head on our shoulders, okay. Item B is the amended checklist and subdivision regulations, public hearing and possible vote. This is a continuation from the August 4th, no, September 1st meeting, right? Yeah, this is a continuation from September 1st. So we can open the, the public hearing, want to start going through the checklist again? So I think everybody got electronic copies, I don't know how many of you got hard copies. What I did was, I think hopefully it's self-explanatory, I sent you the code to my colorful display, but I thought you needed to understand what we were doing, so. After the last meeting, so initially presented all the, the items that were to be deleted, the red were the new proposed wording. And what was discussed at the last meeting is what is now in blue. And then, as I went through these, I realized that they still weren't standardized. So I went back through them all, and I tried to meticulously, methodically standardize all of these checklists, so that once you start looking at them, there's, it just becomes like muscle memory, that it's the same things, especially the existing conditions. We're going through and asking pretty much the same thing on every application, that it simplifies matters. And so that, when I went through, and it would be like, I don't, like the preliminary plan for master plan, I'd see something, I go, oh, well, that should be carried through on all of them. So I went back through and added those. So that's what I did, that's what's in green. After the meeting, and I went back through and realized that these additional items should be included, so those are what, you can look at the blue as what we discussed the last time, to make sure that, that I got that correct. And the green is what I'm suggesting new to basically standardize or supplement what was existing before. So, you know, I, I'm not saying I've still got it all right, but, you know, I did good with it. In interim, we did get some comments from Joe Cardello from Steer, I asked him to look at a few of them. So that was sent to you, so that was attachments to the concept plan, the site analysis, and ERS, he made comments to that. So on that sheet, his comments are the underline. Then also today, well, before and then today, I got comments from Rick from DPW. So I think you have some of them, he sent the master, or he sent the major land development comments today as well. They pretty much reflect the same as, as what were on, comments on the other ones. And then, uh, this late this afternoon, I received a few comments from Mike Marcello for some legal comments that we can go through. So based on all that, where are we gonna start? Like I say, oh, and so I think the hardest part is, if we can go through some of them and just, you know, work out the language that we want, for the ones that I think were still kind of up in the air and clean those up, then that can carry through to all of the different checklists, we don't necessarily need to touch on those on every single checklist. So I think maybe what we'll do is start with the first one again, if that's all right with everybody, and then start with that and go forward and see how we do with it. So the first one, attachment one, is the administrative subdivision. What I'll do is go through what I comment, what the comments, like from Joe on item one, he wanted to add the GIS map. On item nine, he suggested just calling it a purpose statement, let me say, purpose statement need to define elsewhere. So it's a matter of if we want to call it a purpose statement, or an explanatory note summarizing the purpose of the plan. And I put for administrative subdivision include also the change being proposed. I don't know if anybody has strong feelings about which way you want that worded. I think some of these things, if we touch on these now, we can go through, because that will follow through on all the checklists. So once we decide the wording on this one, we'll just be consistent throughout, so. I don't know how people would like to see that, that wording changed or kept the same. Anybody?
I'm okay with it.
Which way?
Statement of purpose. Right, purpose statement, that's what I was saying.
You want statement of purpose?
Or
Purpose statement?
Fine.
Instead of explanatory note summarizing the purpose of the plan? Yeah, a little cleaner, okay. Anybody else? With strong feeling one way or the other? Okay, all right, so we changed that as a purpose statement all the way through on number nine? And also add GIS map, that would be something that would follow through on, on all of the checklists. Everybody all right with those?
Where are you gonna put that, Susan?
That was number nine?
All right.
You said it's the explanatory note summarizing the purpose of the plan, put, just call it a purpose statement? Want to go forward with that? And the one I had the hardest time with was, when I got Joe for comments on, for number 10, is the graphic scale. I wa, I want to develop, verify with him if the minimum of one inch equals 100 feet is the standard, or if it, if it had changed at all. He did suggest some language, maybe to say, as, I don't know, I'm not sure, I still don't have clean language for a graphic scale as common in the engineering and architectural industry, or if you want standardized to be con, I don't know, I still don't have the clean language for that, I don't know if anybody can come up with something a little better.
Su, Susan, if, if I can, again, you get them very specific as one inch equals 100. Every plan, every project can be drawn at any nu, any number of scales. Architectural plans don't use one inch equals 100, they use an architectural scale. The bottom, the big thing is, the point is, I think you really just want to make sure there is a graphic scale.
Okay.
For, you know, regardless whether it's a 20 scale, 40 scale, 30 scale, 100 scale drawing, you just want that graphic scale. From there, you can, if it's reduced in size, you can still interpolate, you know, the distance by using that graphic scale.
Shouldn't there be a minimum, though, Joe, because that's usually what I've seen, like, you know?
A hundred scale is a decent size for a minimum. But if, if you have a parcel that's, you know, 400 acres, you're not gonna fit that on one plan. If the board wants to see that entire parcel on one plan, it might have to be a 400 scale plan. But it's just, you know, at that point, it's an overview plan, there would be very little detail, it'd just be a little bit better than a locust map. The 100-foot minimum would be where you want to see the, start seeing some detail. Maybe houses, stone walls, significant features. You want to get down to the 20 scale, and now you're looking at walkways, paths, and a little bit more, you know, detail. So, I mean, the minimum of 100 scale, but I think the board should be willing to accept something in a much smaller scale, if it's warranted for that particular parcel.
Well, so if it just says in a graphic scale, I mean, is that
Yeah, you just want a graphic scale on every plan.
I agree with you, Joe, but I think for, when you start the recording for the milage, you have to have some kind of a standard. I mean, as Jennifer says, at least a minimum. Because when the title examiners go in and, and check out this milar, it has to be, be at a scale. I mean, for the board, when they're reviewing, I can see
Okay, yeah, no, for recording, yes, 100 scale would be an absolute minimum.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I think you're, reading it that way for recording, I, I think you're, I think it's warranted to say, you can say 100 scale wa, minimum.
For review purposes, I can see your point, but I can look forward to the land evidence books, too.
All right, so actually, I think, would that change it if you have the true north arrow on graphic scale? But the whole thing, the minimum of one inch, or it's otherwise required on an 18 by 24-inch milar for recording purposes, that whole thing in parentheses? I think if we move the parentheses after required to the end, so does that then mean that, that it's a minimum of one inch equals 100 feet on the milar? But otherwise, they can have just a graphic scale. Does that make that clear?
No, I think Rosemary was saying she wants to have the 100 foot, and I don't think that's a bad idea for recording purposes.
Right, if that's the minimum, well, that's what it says, if it's in parentheses, it's saying that that's the 100 foot who is otherwise required for the milar for recording purposes.
Good, I would get rid of, just keep a, a minimum of one inch equals, one inch equals 100 feet, closed parentheses. You said a minimum, so if they want to record something at 20 scale, they're not prohibited from that.
Or otherwise, it's, do we need the, or as we, otherwise required?
That's why I'm saying delete or otherwise required.
Okay, and then the on and the on, an 18 by 24-inch milar for recording purposes? All right. Alright. Alright, would that do it? I mean, I just, I know, I get what you're saying. You don't want to pin it down. You don't want to be too specific.
Well, I.
Just want to have it so that it's clear to the engineer that, that's applying what they need to do.
Yes. See, when I read that and even when I read it again tonight, when I see or otherwise requ- uh, required, I'll make the argument, well, it's a big parcel. I want to do it one inch equals five hundred. And that's what you're read say. That's not what you want. You want it no less than a one inch equals a hundred. So just click plainly stated, minimum of one inch equals a hundred.
Alright, and then get or as otherwise required. Alright, alright. Does that clarify that one then? Cause I can carry that one through on all the sheets. Um.
Maybe you should have another one for review purposes and give them the discretion of using the scale that they want.
I think that's in your regulations.
Okay.
Uh, I have to go back and check them.
I think if you're saying true north arrow on graphic scale, isn't that saying that that leaves it open? It's just saying that for, for the recording purposes on the milar, you have the minimum?
Well, right. Well, it says for record. So that's what, for recording purposes limits that one inch equals a hundred to those plans. Um, now, when you record, you record every plan from the subdivision, including cross sections and all that? Or do you just record the property lines?
Yeah.
No, we record.
Everything.
Detail. Yeah, we record detail. I know that's on the, uh, further along where you get to the cross sections and, and that language we have to figure out too.
An administrative subdivision really is just the.
Oh, alright. Now, Rosemary, thank you. You just said that administrative subdivision. I'm applying this to the whole, to all planes. No, I just leave it at a minimum of one inch equals a hundred and you could get rid of for recording purposes. Why limit it?
Well, because the 18 by 24 inch mark is the size we use for recording. And that's why I put it on the administrative subdivision. I don't think it's on the other sheets, but that's, you know, administrative subdivision is just basically like submitted for record, that plan specifically.
For adminis- up top, do you want to say 24 by 36? You, you're mixing and matching sheet sizes. So you don't, you don't want them to come to the planning board with the 24 by 36 and then either have to reduce it or redraw it.
Well, that's what happens every time. That's what happens to every plan we get. Nobody submits 18 by 24s. But then when they record, they have to, they have to adjust the size.
So they're reducing, every time they reduce everything?
Yeah, because now we're saying we want everything in 24 by 36. And like, that's what Prince B and a bunch of the engineers always submit is 24 by 36.
Right. Now that, that's usual and customary.
Right. I don't know. It seems like Bill Smith's are a little smaller, but I don't know for sure if they are. Maybe they just seem less bulky. But that's, that's why, you know, whatever graphic scale they choose on the, the 24 by 36. Whatever you say the industry standard is, that's all I wanted to make sure that we have.
Can't, can't they shrink the, the, um, plan down proportionally?
Well, yeah, that, and that's what, and that's why you need graphic scale. Because if they, if they present something on a 24 by 36 and then they can, they can reduce it to an 18, uh, by 24, much like we do with the copy machine. With the copy machine, you can, you know, increase and decrease by percentage. That's why it's imperative that you have a graphic scale because that graphic scale will also reduce or enlarge at the same ratio as, uh, the rest of the plan. So a reduced plan, I won't be able to use my scale anymore, um, directly. But I could scale, okay, I can see on the graphic scale, a certain distance represents 50 feet. Then I can use that, then I could go interpolate where 50 feet falls and measure things.
Alright. Seems like I've seen sometimes on plans, it says not to scale. They're marked not to scale.
Well, a, a plan that's reduced would be marked, should be marked not to scale.
Right.
Um, you know, when.
How critical is that for?
Well, it actually should be marked reduced. By having a graphic scale, it is to scale. It's just a reduced scale and you don't know what that scale is. It could be one inch equals eighty-two and a half.
Right.
Because now like when I get, when I get plans in PDF, um, sometimes, you know, they've been, they've been reduced a few times and they've gone through multiple scanners. Um, I can go into Adobe and I can measure off that, um, that graphic scale. If it says a hundred feet and my Adobe says, well, it's point seven inches. I can set up the ratio very quickly. So it knows whenever I measure point seven inches, it equals, it will actually report a hundred feet.
Well, I think actually by and large, I mean, as planning board members, we don't really go around and verify graphic scales when we're looking at site plans. So since that's what you would do during your critical review, that if you have the ability to do that, then it seems like that would suffice. I'm just trying to get to the, the brunt of what the wording should be here for this. To clean it up. I mean, if that, will that do it say true north arrow and graphic scale parentheses, minimum of one inch equals a hundred feet on an 18 by 24 inch milar for recording purposes?
I think it works.
Is that alright? Does that work? And for administrative subdivision, I think that, that covers it so that the out, that an engineer applicant will know what to do.
I, I think so.
Because you, you're the one that's interpreting the scale.
Right.
I don't, sometimes I look at it, but I mean, I don't have the critical eye to, to look at it.
Which quite honestly, Susan, I do pretty much on every review and that's, I always look for a graphic scale.
Right.
Um, because as soon as it comes to me in PDF, I don't know if it was plotted to scale. Um, if it's a reduced copy. So the first thing I, if I put printed out, the first thing I do is I put a scale on the graphic scale to see if it measures correctly. If it does, okay, great. It was plotted to scale and printed to scale. Um, sometimes I print and I usually do print everything to 1117, uh, which we all know is not to scale. But I can still use the computer to, and I, I could actually do it with a scale itself. If I'm measuring, you know, three eighths of an inch is a hundred feet, I just know every three eighths of an inch, I'm, I'm measuring a hundred feet.
Alright. Alright. So you're, I guess what I get to is, is that, that language is good.
I think so.
Okay. Everybody else okay with that then? It's roundabout? Okay.
Good.
Somebody, Peter?
Sounds good.
That sounds good.
Okay. Oh, alright. Is that somebody else had a comment? Alright. So going to item number 13, another comment. Joe had was just changing licensed professional land surveyor. So that would be an item that would include, that we carry throughout. Um, everybody's good with that one. And then if you guys have any questions about any of the items in green, just ask, um, I think these are all just items that I pulled from the different checklist that were on those. And I just tried to standardize them in a order that, that made sense to me. Um, oh, Mike, you did have a comment about. Where was it?
Was it the first part, the notarized letter?
Yeah, it was one of them. I know. Why am I not finding it now? Isn't that, well, first that thing is a general principle of the, um, oh, about, yeah, versus general principle, it's good idea to take the checklist out of the reg. So we don't have to do this kind of public hearing process. Um, I asked about that, but we had, would have to advertise specifically for that. So I think in the next go around, we can do that. Um, so that we can do this without having to go through this advertised process. Um, and also I had a general statement that the checklist is designed to serve as a guide. The planning board reserves the right to request additional information as deemed necessary. Um, actually, I was looking at that going, I thought I did that. So, but you know, I realized on the first, what, one, two, three checklist, I don't have the paragraph at the top that says it's arranged to assist the application for the approval. And then also at the end of all of them, they did have that disclaimer that said this was deemed complete for the purpose of commenting, but it gave the playing board, um, correction or asking for additional information. So I think actually what I would do is go back to the first three. Yeah. Cause I didn't have that kind of opening paragraph that you'll see on the other ones. It says, this checklist is furnished with the application of blah, blah, blah. So I did miss that. Um, uh, the one complete electronic copy of plans should also be requirement. I think they had the electronic set of plans and all supporting item. Um, so the purpose of the notarized letter from the property owner applicant makes more sense if the applicant submits a letter indicating that the owner has given the applicant permission to proceed with the application. I was under the assumption that's what a notarized letter was. I don't know. That the notarized letter is saying that the applicant has permission or being represented by somebody other than the owner.
Well, you have, you have, you have them representing the owner. They can't represent the owner. That's only lawyers can represent other people. So they're just act, they're acting on behalf of their own, you know, they're acting on behalf of an applicant, right? They're, the applicant's acting either, you know, either they're going to buy the property or they're, they're potential developer of the property, but they're not acting on behalf of the owner. They're acting on behalf of themselves with the permission of the owner.
Okay. So instead of.
You used the word, you used the word represent.
Yeah, so.
A lay, a lay person can't represent another person before any board in Rhode Island, right?
Okay. I thought if they had a notarized letter that gave them the permission to do that. No?
Not really. It's kind of like, not, no.
Okay. So.
I mean, I, I think you just want to make sure, I think your purpose is to make sure that the person that's before the board, right? Has the authority, ha- has the permission of the owner of the property to proceed with the application, no matter what that application may be, right?
Right. And it's going to, oh, to, I know. So what would be the wording to, to rep, not represent, to proceed? To proceed, not, to proceed on.
Say to apply, to apply for. Has been given authority to.
This was, this was all existing language. This was a great existing language and I just moved it ahead of it. Um, the applicant has the specific, specific for authority to to apply, uh, is it apply on, in lieu of the owner or apply on behalf of the owner?
No, no. Sometimes it's not.
So what are they doing?
Somebody who's going to buy it.
They're not representing.
Right. Is this, so you're saying this is what the current checklist says?
Yeah, this is black. It's original language. Yep.
Geez.
Yeah. So see, that was why my understanding was that only that, that we didn't have to get a notarized letter if it was a lawyer because they could represent. But like when the engineers come on behalf of applicants, that's when we were asking for a notarized letter saying that then that whoever the owner is, is giving them permission to represent them before the board or to act on their behalf before the board. There's another way to say it to legally be correct. It's need that language.
The notary, the notary is just notarizing that the, the owner, the owner signed the letter. That's all that order. It doesn't, doesn't turn it down into a legal. All you're notarizing is that, that the person who signed the letter is the person who said they signed the letter. It's that, just, that's all the notary does. They can't, can't make a legal, can't make a.
I know, but the form says that, that they're allowing, they're being allowed to this, whoever the person is, is being allowed to act on behalf of or to represent or act on behalf of, um, the matter before the board.
We developed a form letter in the past.
Yeah, in place of, they're allowed to be there, like saying we have an applicant or an owner, but they don't want to come before the board. So the, the engineer comes and presents the plan and does the discussion. We asked for a notarized letter that says that they're able to be there instead of the owner before the board.
Perhaps, perhaps we should have, uh, Mr. Marcelo look at the, the form letter that we had developed. I believe by a former solicitor.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have that. I mean, Tara, if you could, um, send that over to Mike tomorrow to look at, I guess, to figure out what language it is. And if that, that form isn't correct, I mean, that's what we've been, that's been used for years.
Decades.
Oh, decades?
Yeah.
And if it's not correct legal representation, I guess we just need to update that. Um, well, why don't we then hold off on that if you don't want to, if we don't have the language to fit in there, the specific authority? I mean, to apply on, to imply in place of on behalf of the owner? I don't know. You're saying you're not representing the owner?
Well.
Representing the applicant. Now, well, I guess like what you were trying to make sure is somebody doesn't come before the board representing a, a situation that the owner isn't aware of.
Correct.
Or they don't know what they're doing to their land.
Right.
So by getting notarized letter signing off and.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Not in the case of administrative subdivisions, but a lot of times if you have a major land development, say, uh, you'll have an applicant that doesn't own the property yet. So when they know, when they give us a notarized letter, it's that there, that the applicant is allowed to apply for them, for instance, major land development, uh, but they're not representing the owner. And, and as Mike said, represent, you can't represent without being an attorney. So my, my point is you're, it's not necessarily that the person applying is representing or in any way doing something for the owner. It's just that the owner is aware that they're do, that they're applying.
Right.
I don't know if that's clear.
I mean, that makes sense. I don't know how you want to word.
Yeah.
Well, because that's legal stuff. So I'm not going to give up on trying to attempt to word it. So we need some, we need some different language for that. And then, um, if you can review our form that we have for notary, that we have that people notarize a lot. Prevalent, um, to see if that's proper and still standing or if we need a different form. So I guess we'll get those to you, Mike. Um, you can let us know. And that kind of stuff. Um, so it says, why is a copy of the deed required when you know the provision has a reference to appropriate references to deeds and recorded plats? I thought with the references to recorded deeds and plats were all previous, like the history that we often see on plans. It shows like the history of succession of, of owners and deeds. Um, when we were asking for a copy of the deed, because was it Rosemary? I can't remember. It, it was, it seemed like there was coming into question um, who ownership was, who actually owned the property. And we, sometimes it came to us that we weren't clear who the actual owner was or if the owner had, ownership had recently changed hands. We just wanted to verify that we were, um, I guess approving a plan to somebody who is actually the current owner of the land. Um, I think that was why. I know, Rosemary, do you ever, I think you'd had discussion about this too.
Yes. In the, in the past, in the past, we've had people come in and they haven't had clear title to the property. So, uh, I remember the old administrative officer used to go in and pull the deeds to verify it. And some, some lots had been created by deed that really weren't, I mean, valid. So I mean, it was just protection for the town. I mean, you can't take everything at face value.
But we don't, we don't, the planning board can't determine if someone has clear title or not. That's not, that's beyond the purview of the planning board.
I'm using the wrong term, Mike, but I mean, it has come in, in the past.
Were you saying?
Susan, isn't this, isn't this meeting better served between you and the chair instead of with all of us right now? And then we can review whatever suggestions you get at another meeting.
Well, I think.
It seems like this could take a real long time for all of us. It seems like something you could probably get done with the chair. You know, in a little more efficient manner than with us. You know, in a little more efficient manner than with us.
Part of it is a public hearing is, is we're going through this. I mean, I've gone to a certain point on this, but then that's why we needed input from everybody to know. That the.
Well, I mean, I would be willing to vote on letting you and the chair kind of spread these away a little bit, try to save a little time from the entire board.
No, I think part of it is so that you understand, everybody on the board understands kind of what is in these checklists. And why they're there and why we look at them. Um, you know, a lot of it was, I was hoping a lot of this language had been cleaned up, but it's not quite there. I mean, we've done ninety percent of it. Like, we've done ninety percent of it behind the scenes, so I ask you to come down the, the last of it before these get approved.
Right, are, are there new suggestions here though, Susan?
Yeah.
For the language that we're suggesting changing and.
Right, so we got through the graphic scale one. You know, what we need to do, the, the changes, the, the comments that, that Joe had offered on several items. Um, we've gone through those. And now I was looking at a couple of things that Mike had suggested was. Um, need to, to get the language clarified for the notary. And I think that's something that, you know, we need to be, I think everybody should be aware of. It's like these checklists are for all of you to, to look at. And become familiar with, not just.
Oh, I agree. And I know that we'll get to see him and, and, you know, I don't know, vote on it, but we'll get to review them. I, I'm sure we'll get to review them at some point.
Well, that's what.
I just, uh, I've just opened a consolidated a little bit, so.
Well, like I said, the first few are the most painful because that's establishing the language, then it'll carry through on along. With us a little longer. So Mike, will you guess, figure out the notary part of it? Okay.
Again, real confused, I mean, you can do what you want, but um, so yeah, you're requiring the applicants to submit. Copy of the deeds. For the purpose of, again, I mean, none of the, none of the. Like, we don't, we don't, we don't run a title search on the property, so. And you already have a letter from the, the notary letter is to tell the person who's before you has the authority to act on behalf of the owner or the applicant. So the deed is proving what? I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to think about, I don't know what the deed is proving.
Okay.
I, I just, I don't know. I mean, if someone can give me an answer, I, I'm okay. I just don't.
No, all right. I mean, I, that was something that was suggested and so I added it in there, but if it's. Not appropriate, it's not something that we. Do, then.
Because you, because I think the plan, that you require that the plans reference the deeds, which I think is appropriate, because if there is an issue, we can certainly look up the deed if we have an issue, whatever. But you have to reference the easements, which would be, be put, the plans have to show easements, which would be in a deed. Right? That, that's where they get it from. I, I, you know, again, I'm just asking. I, I don't, I don't, it's not, it's, it just seems like a step that. To me, I just want to know the rationale behind it. I don't understand it.
It's backup for the file too, Mike. Um, my deed, my title uh, was wrong. I used the wrong term, but I mean, it was backup for the, the files. So in case you have to go to court, you're not running around looking for uh, all the documentation to be. Gathered at that time. I mean.
I mean, could we make it so that it's like if required or if applicable, if required, like so that if there was a question, we would. Or is that something that would just fall under extra information that we could ask for if it turned up the, with a particular. Project, there was a question, who had it, who actually owned the property?
This is, yeah, I think if, if, if requested or if required, I mean, then, you know, you might have a deed for a hundred acre parcel. One parcel, I mean, do you really need, you really need the deed for the whole hundred acre parcel? But if you might have. A development with, they're taking three existing lots or six existing lots and trying to, you know, merge it into three lots. Then you might want to look at the deeds, but I, I, I guess, I mean, I don't know.
Another thing too, Mike, is easements. Many times uh, an applicant will come in and say. I have a, a parcel, a large parcel, but I, and it may be landlocked. And they'll say, well, I have an easement. And in the long run, they don't have an easement to get to it.
Well, no, that, in that, in that case, I agree with you. We would, then, again, we would, we definitely want to see the deed. We, we, but the, the plans or the checklist has now says, Eddie. In all easements must reference the deed or somewhere, you know, we're, you know, a reference to a deed. So if it's not, you know, we, we'd have to see it.
It's saving the administrative officer uh, time to go and look it up. The uh. Uh, the applicant is bringing the information to the administrative officer.
Jennifer, do you have a strong sense of which way you think would work better? If it's.
Well, I think, I think what's going to happen is they don't give it to me. And then I'm gonna be. Uh, on, you know, saying to them, well, you, you, this isn't complete. Because you need to give me the deeds, when I kind of know I can just look them up. When they have the deeds, when they have the numbers, the book and page on the, I think they do.
When they have the references, that always has.
Yeah, on the plan, so.
The most current.
I mean, I can see that it would, you know, you'd have it all in the file, but I think of getting. The information from the applicant sometimes. Can be more difficult than.
Well, do you want to eliminate it, or do you want to make it subjective, like to say if required or if requested? I mean, if requested.
If requested, yeah, and then.
That way, if there ever is something controversial or um. You know, you have a question about it, then you, you have the right to ask them for it.
Yes.
Okay, all right, you qualify it. Okay, thank you. All right, so, let's see, did that, I think. Well, I think we got through, well, I think that's everything then for the administrative subdivision. If nobody has questions or any comments about the items in green. Um, those are the changes that were made.
I do have, I do have uh, some comments.
Okay, go ahead.
It's sorry.
It's all right.
I know this is hard, but uh, since we're, you know, they're becoming official.
Yep.
Regulations, I want to get things right.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
So in uh, number one, it, it said in red, provide an aerial GIS clearly depicting the subject parcel. It should, I think it should say, provide an aerial photograph or satellite imagery. GIS is not the correct term, so that's just.
Okay, so what is it you want?
Photograph or satellite imagery. I think you, I, you know, you want like an overhead view, like Google Maps kind of thing.
Okay. All right.
That. Actually. That looks like it for administrative subdivision, good.
I, I also picked up one, one more thing tonight.
Okay.
On number fourteen.
Yep.
Um, you start to get specific and you say, and you are, you're very specific, concrete and granite. Uh, existing and proposed permanent bounds, concrete or granite. That's very specific to that type of property marker. Um, perhaps you want to say permanent property markers such as granite or concrete bounds, field stone bounds. Iron pins, et cetera. Because you're gonna have a steel pin in the ground and that is a. Um, some of these parcels were, you know, some of the bounds are all field stone bar, uh, bounds. Um, it could be a drill hole at the end of a, a stone wall. Those are all permanent markers. So I don't think you want to limit yourself to granite and concrete bounds. Um, there are some, some instances that a bound can't be set.
Right.
So they would use an iron pin or if it were a ledge or at the end of a stone wall, they might put a drill hole. Uh, at the, at some corner.
But it does say where possible.
Yeah, that was the existing language. Um. I guess that, that's what they were trying to aim for, were more permanent, but um. Kind of people have strong feelings. I mean, if you want to send me that specific language, I'll be glad to, to change it. I mean, I think I changed on the other ones. You said permanent boundary markers. Um, I changed that on all the other ones, I guess.
You, if you want to be that generic, you can, uh, you could be. Permanent boundary markers would also work. Because it doesn't limit you. As soon as you start a list of something. You can tend to get into trouble because if you forget one thing, then that doesn't have to be met.
Yeah, I think that's what you had on one thing, and I, I think I put it on all the other ones, where, so you'd have location of existing and proposed permanent boundary markers.
Yep.
And I don't know, should just eliminate concrete or granite where possible?
Don't, I would not get specific.
And you think you should eliminate the concrete or granite where possible?
Permanent uh, boundary marker.
There you go.
That way, that way, it opens a door that you want them all. Whether it's a concrete bound, a granite bound, an iron pin, a drill hole. Um.
Okay. I mean, that's easier for me. I'll just change that because that carries through all of the checklist. To just change that to permanent boundary markers.
Yep.
Okay, that's good.
And then on number twenty-one. Um, and I saw it's written a little bit differently on one of the next checklist. Um, again, your, let's see, location of the project, all existing buildings, structures, improvements. Include stone walls and historic cemeteries on the subject parcel. What you've excluded is areas of potential historic significance or natural features. So once you start that list and then you don't add something. You've pretty much excluded all those other things that you may want to see.
But for administrative subdivision, is that, are those, those?
I think you, an administrative subdivision, if there were a um. An area of uh, protect, and I always like to use the word potential. Historic significance. In other words, there might be a mound of stones in the middle of the property. If that property was subject to some historic event, it could be a grave. It might not, it may or may not be, I don't know, that's why I always use the potential historic significance. Um, it could be a grave, it could be a marker of. Whatever, you know, to something, um, if it's a natural feature, um. You know, the stone arch. Um, you'd want to see that, I would think.
On an administrative subdivision, that's specific? I mean, that's what I'm looking at specifically for, for administrative subdivision. Do you think you need that if you're just changing lot lines? I don't know. I don't know, Jennifer, what do you think?
Yeah, it's probably too much for administrative subdivision, but.
Okay. I said, I saw this come up again and it was covered in something two, uh, two points later, so. Um, when we get to that.
I would say, I would say minor or majors is, it's good to put that in.
Right, we can make it broader for that, but I think, because we don't even ask for topographical information on.
Right.
Subdivision. I eliminated that because I come up a few times that, that we're not doing, asking for existing contours.
That makes sense.
I thought that. So, I mean, basically, we're just looking for any existing buildings or structures. On the site when we're moving lot lines or merging lots. We're not taking into consideration all that other stuff.
Right, now that, that makes sense, again.
That's okay to do that? Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so I think that, that'll cover that for administrative subdivision. Um, you just need to get the, the notary. I think information clarified, then what I'll do is I'll go through this and I'll change, do all the other changes. And do everything that, the green and the blue and the red, put everything in red so you can see where we are. Um, and then Mike, when you get the, the wording for the notary stuff, if you can get that to Jennifer, um, get to me or me. Then I'll um, add that in, and then that would be ready to go. Was that good? That's on all right? Okay. All right, so let's go to. Checklist two is. The concept plan. Um, so we have twelve copies. Yeah, so there were a few things I think I didn't include, or I made them more general, because this is just a concept plan. Um, couple, some of Joe's comments were on, on item number two. Where you listed as complex concept plan, where should it be indicated? And I can add, that would be indicated in the title block. I think that's as good a places. And we don't need on every sheet, but it should be, well, it should be in the title block, that it's a concept plan for Claire, um, for Claire. Um, again, number seven, we would change the purpose statement. And number eight, we would change the, see, does that same wording apply for the, the graphic scale, or would it just be graphic scale? And then the rest? Will we keep all that other stuff the same as the other one, or just change?
No, le- limited to a minimum of, of one inch equals one hundred feet, close parenthesis.
And that's it?
Yep.
Okay, because this is just a concept plan. We don't need all the other information. Okay. We go to, oh, that was the other question I had, was about what class of survey it should be. So I know I had Tara send that out to you. Joe provided me that. For your, for your edification, the class survey standards. So mostly, most time we ask for class one, which is the most. Complete. Um, after reviewing this, it looked like a class four survey. Um, a complete, using compilation maps for a concept plan would probably be. Sufficient unless you think even that's too, asking for too much on a concept plan?
Yeah, I, I don't have my notes, uh. But for a concept plan, I don't think you really need a class one survey, which is actually having the surveyor go out there and.
Right.
And uh, you know, calculate the property uh, on a concept plan. After the concept plan level, you definitely do need to go to a class one, but. At the initial start, I don't think you really need it, a class one. And if it was class four that, that fell into.
Right, so that's compiled from maps, deeds and other sources of information. Um, limited field investigations. But it's not saying that it's a hundred percent accurate, it's just giving a general sense of what the parcel looks like.
Correct.
In class four survey, okay. And then again, changing that to professional land surveyor.
Right.
Oh, then you had. You had show or provide a statement if the parcel falls within. And then you had a FEMA floodplain map. Um, the wellhead protection area and groundwater recharge area. Maybe you wanted that additional language added in. Because what I could do is just have that as the number eighteen, and then those three items is just like some, some headings below.
On the base, base flood elevation. Um, I don't know if that's defined anyplace in your regulations. Um, but. Base flood elevation, you're also looking at the FEMA map. Um. I don't know if you should be specific to use NADD eighty-eight, which is the current. Um, state datum being used, and that's also used on the FEMA maps. Um, NADD eighty-eight. Uh, replaces NGVD nineteen twenty-nine. Um, so there's a whole history of it. But um, right now, the current base of, base of uh. Base elevation is NADD eighty-eight. I, I just looked that up again tonight.
Now, the base flood elevation, as far as I know, that that's more for a building, isn't it? Uh, how far the building is off of it, or what would you measure?
No, the, the base flood elevation in this case is. Um, if you download contours from uh, GIS. They're based on NADD eighty-eight.
Would be like a twelve or something would be twelve feet.
No, it's a datum. Um, go back and read, if you read one of the permits, you know, for floodplain, says the flood elevation is a hundred and two. That elevation is not a hundred and two based on mean sea level, but a hundred and two based on NADD eighty-eight. So you've got different datums. You've got, you know, city of Providence uses uh, the city of Providence data, which is different. Everything, so. For consistency. For consistency, you, you want that state, um, state datum.
What is it that they put on it? Is that when they put like zone X or zone ten or whatever?
So zo- a zone X is usually an area of uh, no flooding, so there's no elevation. But in, in the areas that there are flooding, there is flooding, they give, you know, the flood elevation of, you know, eighty-two. That eighty-two references the uh, the datum of NADD eighty-eight. Which is tied to mean sea level and, and. High, high and low tides.
Well, I think if we just ask for the base flood, base flood elevation data, then the engineer should put whatever, whatever's appropriate, shouldn't they? Other than getting specific.
I, I think you could put in parentheses, NADD eighty-eight.
Say again, NADD.
North American vertical datum.
Oh, V D eight. North, North American vertical datum eighty-eight?
Yes.
And, but you would only give this if it's in a high risk flood zone, like the A or the V. Zones, right? I mean, wouldn't give it in an X zone.
No, you, you, you could give it, and it's. You, it's not, it's important to be on NADD eighty-eight if you're in the next zone, because then you could, you know, simply just. Uh, measure the top of a, of a stone bound or something and say, call it assumed one hundred. And then the contours would be drawn, you know, based off that datum. They would not be, you would not be able to relate the elevations to anything on the state plane. Unless you went and found the elevation of that same reference be- benchmark and did the conversion.
Alright, let's start to get over my head, but if I put base flood elevation data, comma, NADD eighty-eight. That will be sufficient for engineers.
I'll send, I'll send you something, um.
Well, that's sufficient for review and for engineers and for Jennifer's review, then, then I think that's. Adequate, I just wanna make sure, you know, that they know what to submit and that tells you what you need to review, but, but.
I'm pretty sure most of the plans I've seen come, uh, come before the town are based on NADD eighty-eight.
Alright, if you wanna verify, you can let us know. And then, so if everybody wants to use that show or provide statement if a parcel lies within the FEMA floodplain map, wellhead protection area, groundwater recharge, I can add that. And. And then. Oh, I wish, I think I saw a comment somewhere, oh yeah, on number twenty-two, just do approximate location of wetlands. Number twenty-three, approximate location of wooded areas. If you're, since it's a concept plan, we don't need something defined. Clear then, um, so number twenty-six, Rick's comment. On all the way, all these, all the way through, he wants location with, and then he wants to add classification and name of existing. Public, private and paper streets, the classification he's looking for, and so that they. What, what kind of roads they are, they indicate on there if they're public or private or a paper street, because a- lots of times. You know, we just have roads with names. Sometimes it takes a while to clarify it, so I think what he's asking for is it just gets clarified upfront. Um, so it's something I followed through on all of them, whenever it came to naming roads that we included classification. Um. Another comment that was at on number twenty-eight. For location of exist- existing utilities include gas, electric, water. And they wanted wells added, so I've put water slash wells. And I have sanitary slash OWTS for septic, so. Um, I thought water was inclusive of both public and private, but since I. Had already done sewer and septic, um, we can add water slash wells, just so they know that they need to add that. With that, you know, locating it, um. And then, on twenty-nine, I guess he was asking where it says within or immediately adjacent to a subject parcel. Um, he thought that, Joe, that immediately was subjective, wherever we have, immediately adjacent, it's kind of redundant. I thought you could just erase or delete the item immediately, it says within or adjacent to the subject parcel, if you think that's adequate to. To be clear. Um, if you guys are alright with that. Do then, number thirty-one. I think that was, comment was that that was a, was that a statement? So we could just add proposed comprehensive permit for low and moderate income housing. So under proposed for concept plan, you just wanna know at the beginning if they're applying for a comp permit. Um, so it's a matter of checking that off. And then there was a comment, let's see, on number thirty-four, to include setbacks. Um, so lot areas and dimensions, setback lines with proposed lot lines, so just adding setback lines. Into that item. See, number thirty-eight, just clarify, would be proposed connections, their proposals for the proposed connection with existing water supply. And public sewer systems. Or onsite water and sewage disposal. Thirty-nine is the one that gave everybody the option. So I didn't know what language, um. I know Jennifer, if you come up with whatever, so, you know, initially submitted the photo rendering or architectural drawing of proposed development. Or I pulled the other language off, and that's what I have in blue. So we just need to make it commit, we need to commit to which language to use. So Jennifer, do you have, have comments?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't mind, you know. I guess the first one that you proposed was more, was clear, but.
I mean, I think that to clarify, I think to include for major land development or commercial developments, because.
Yeah, yeah.
When we have propositions, we're really not looking for, we're looking for.
That's true.
Any major land development or, or commercial development, that's where we wanna really see.
Yeah.
What it's gonna use by, right?
That makes total sense, yes.
So, um, if you want, we would just do photo rendering or architectural drawing of. Proposed development for major land development or commercial development, would that, would that be?
Yeah, that looks, that looks good. Elevations, photos or scale models, I don't know if we're gonna get a scale model, but.
Right, nobody probably does that. Building Legos. Because what we wanna see is what, what it says.
What it's gonna, yeah.
Illustrate the visual impact, I mean, that's what we're looking for. Um, you know, we wanna get it ideally, you see we have with these large projects. If we see from the beginning what the impact is gonna be, so I don't know if you wanna include some of that language or just keep it simple.
Um. As may be needed to illustr- yeah, I think that, I don't know, your second, your second one, I guess is. Is good, I mean.
Want to do renderings, elevations or elevation, I mean, far photos. And eliminate scale models.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if they really wanna give a scale model, then.
Well, yeah, bring, so renderings, elevations or photos is maybe needed to illustrate the visual impact of the proposal for a major land development or commercial development.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have comments on, on that? I think that carries through a number of them too, so I can carry that language. Adam, do you have a comment?
I do not.
I have a comment.
Oh yeah, yep, go ahead.
Sorry, um.
Don't worry.
Uh, number, this is the only one here, on this one. Uh, number fourteen.
Okay.
Is really complicated, but.
Well, yeah.
As, density calculations based on the exclusion of unsuitable. Land from the total land area, include the total acreage. And the acreage of unsuitable land, the resulting total number of units allowed by right. I, maybe this isn't an issue of the checklist, but um, you, in. In the zoning code, uh, unsuitable land is defined in to include. Uh, slopes larger than twenty-one percent. And there's actually a state law that's relatively new in the last few years that, um. Prohibits the towns, um, excluding that.
Excluding.
Yeah.
We, we, we understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our former town solicitor explained all of that to us, we just haven't gotten around to changing.
To changing it, okay, I just, alright.
But is unsuitable.
Should be in the checklist, I guess.
Unsuitable land is also wetlands, right? I mean.
Uh, wetlands count as unsuitable.
Right.
Yes.
Right, right, so I wasn't looking at just unsuitable as large slopes, I figured that's.
Yes, wetlands too.
Wetlands or permanent easements on them, that kind of thing, anything that you can calculate, I know, I mean, I, I struggled with this language. Too, I mean, this obviously was the existing language. Most of it, but I tried to work it, so it made sense to me, but.
Yeah.
Density.
Sense to me too.
I know, density calculations based on exclusion of unsuitable land from the total land area.
You know, I think, I think it's written fine, uh, that it's in the checklist, I guess my issue is that it should change in zoning code. So I think it's okay.
What needs to change and which part needs to change in the zoning?
Uh, how unsuitable land is defined, it's defined as, um. The slopes over twenty-one percent, and it shouldn't be.
Oh, maybe it is in zoning in the regs we changed it.
Oh, yes, it's in. I double checked.
How is it divine, find like that in zoning?
Yes.
Uh, that's problem, yeah, no, it was in the subdivision regs where we.
Also, okay, alright.
Okay. Um, so you wanna leave all the language as it was?
Yeah, yeah.
Not great. Uh, yeah, I added in that part allowed by right, because, you know. People just say the number of units, it's like, so I wanted to clarify that it's what they're allowed by right.
Right, right.
Is there anything else that you had?
Nope.
Okay. This one, and then I was gonna add the um, opening paragraph that I forgot, it said, they basically said, it's like on the. Other ones, that this checklist is furnished by the planning board above our addressing the comments that, that Mike had, so I'll add that paragraph. So if that's good, I'd be work, almost there on that one, what I'll do is I'll try doing a clean copy with all the changes in red. My time, I can go through it again, that would have, yeah, minimal disclosures or disclaimers because it's a concept plan. Okay. So, now I get to number three. On the site analysis, okay, so. This one I realized is basically isn't a standalone checklist, it's a supplement. Because when I went, when I was reading it in the subdivision regs, the top part is what it says, it's, it's required for all major land developments and subdivisions. Master plan. Um, it's required at our discretion for minor subdivisions. And I added that it can be required at our discretion for an ERS. Um, because basically it asks for a lot of the things that are already on the checklist, but it asks for more detail. Um, I'll add the opening paragraph that I forgot. To put on that, Mike's suggestion, but, so this one. It was a little bit different in the things that it asked for, because all the items on this checklist. Would then be incorporated into an ERS application. Or a minor subdivision plan or a master plan, it's not gonna be, it doesn't need to be a standalone. Plan set that is submitted, um, so that's why I changed it. I guess I had it as an addendum, but then I realized it's really a supplement to, um. These other ones, so that's how I wrote it, and does that make sense to everybody? It's still with me here? Um.
Yep.
Okay, and.
Indeed.
And then a lot of it I took from, I went to the subdivision regs. And I pulled this information from our regs, um, to incorporate that to form the checklist. Um, the one comment was to add the name of the applicant owner. Um, you do that between one and two, and I realize, like, if they did a cover sheet like the ERS, if they have to do, it's like, some of these things are gonna be narratives. So if they have to submit it, so if it comes as like a narrative, uh, part of it, um. You know, I as well ask them to add, put the name of the applicant owner on the cover page, so I added that in. Um, that's where I ju- had the comments about steep slopes. Um, and the addressing slope stability, erosion and safety came from section twenty-three fifty-three. Um, in the subdivision regs, Joe had asked about that, had commented about that. Um, and that is in. And so it does comport in their subdivision regs, um. And then I started doing, you'll see on these, like, so number five, if it's located within the watershed. Then they need to complete attachment thirteen, so it's like I refer them to these other attachments, so a major land development might, would have to also submit. Attachment three supplement, and then if it's in a watershed, they're gonna have to do attachment thirteen also. Well, they may have multiples, but those are in addition, um. So what I did was I added to, like, number six, it just has wetlands, buffers, rivers and, and stream corridors. So I took this information, where I took it, probably the regs. Um. And all of these, I guess most of these, the red. So on number nine, he asked for floodways and floodplains include a FEMA map showing the parcel. I know, Joe, does that sound right? That's what I took from what you were asking. I mean, I kept it as a FEMA map rather than calling it a FEMA format.
Uh, yeah, FEMA map is, is adequate.
Alright, so if you have floodways and floodplains include a FEMA map showing the parcel. Oh, and then I don't know if Stuart Rosemary, or if this is something from the state on number eleven. You know, questions about, um, notable or significant trees, a twenty inch caliper or greater. Um, if that's an arbitrary number, I don't know, that's been on the books for a long time, I don't know why twenty inch. Caliper grader was selected, and if anybody has any information on that, if that's a state DEM. Or if it's arbitrary number, that should be adjusted. Anybody?
I believe it was a tree commission, uh, committee suggested that, I could be wrong.
Okay.
So what you, what we might wanna do is simply say significant. Mature trees, rather than try to define.
Become very, too subjective?
Yeah. Yes.
I hate subjective, I mean, does twenty inch sound reasonable to you? I mean, that's.
It, it sounds huge, yes, it does sound reasonable.
Okay.
Really.
That's like saving, that's saving a big tree, like a foot and a half, almost a two foot diameter tree, that's getting to be pretty big.
We had some developers that had some huge trees and they just went in and clear cutted them, so we put in a number. Uh, they're, since, one of them is, uh, died since that happened.
How, how does that apply to a parcel that is heavily wooded? I mean, are they supposed to go out and measure every twenty inch tra- tree?
Maybe, well, it says location. Location, indicate notable or significant trees, yeah, I mean, I mean, I guess they could do an area, indicated area, like, there was a groove of them. I mean, but it does probably then give the planning board some. Anyway, we're just ask, in this, we're just asking him to locate them, we're not saying, maybe we can't chop them down. If they probably gave us a plan, I don't know, that's my, my understanding, but. Um. We, we're, at this, we're just asking them to identify.
I can find out if twenty is inappropriate.
Okay.
Just, because uh, I, if you don't put in the inches.
Right.
Gonna get too subjective, but we don't.
One foot, two foot, yeah, six inches, right.
I'll, I'll, I'll go along with that. So let's just keep it as it, as is.
Okay, alright, so we'll keep it at twenty inch unless Jennifer, the next time you come back with some.
Sure.
illuminating information.
My memory is coming back. We had some significant beach trees that we were trying to save too.
Yeah. Okay, alright, so we'll we'll verify that um for the next time. Um number thirteen was just to recommended on the second line, say, or historically significant sites, including structures. Was this where you had the questions? Well, I don't know. This is just locating. This is for site analysis so that when they go through it, like for a major land development, just tried to include everything and I added in, because I found, I don't remember where I saw it, archaeological burial sites and historic cemeteries or historically significant sites, including structures. I don't think there's a whole lot else that would, there was, oh, and then something will carry through number nineteen. He commented that all we, I need to do is say necessitates a phase one environmental site assessment because if phase one is initiated, then two and three will follow. Like, I just uh delete.
Yeah, well, well, phase, so what phase one is, is that uh they research different documents to see if there's any contamin, if there's any possible contaminants. And then phase two is actually going out there and testing for it, and phase three is actually cleaning it up or capping it. But the problem is, if you force them to do a phase one, uh then they will, I mean, I'm I'm saying that we're talking about contaminants, so I think that people should know if property is contaminated, but
Right.
you force somebody to do a phase one and it is contaminated, then they're required to clean it up, like they're responsible.
Right.
Everybody likes to do that because.
Right, that's their obligation.
Yeah.
Can't do phase one and not complete it. And we're asking for location type. I guess it's like if there's any question or it's a known site. It's not like saying every person that does a site analysis has to go out and do an environmental site assessment, do they? It's only if there's a question. Like if a board member says that area was once upon a time of contaminated site, I mean, then we can ask for it again. Does that leave it open? So that if there is a question, we can ask for it. It's not saying that they have to do it. Is that?
Um.
Am I understanding that right?
If you, if you just made it say location and type of contaminants present sufficient to necessitate a phase one, then you, then you're requiring it. I mean.
Alright.
If applicable.
But.
If a flip, yeah.
But.
It seems like, or can we say if required? Because it's like they put NA if it's not applicable.
Yeah. Yes.
I had, I had if applicable behind a lot of these, and they go, well, that's redundant because they put NA and saying it's not applicable. If we say if required, so if there is any question.
I I'd just like to point out that more and more um uh property transactions are required um to do a phase one, whether or not there's any rumors about contamination on the property. For example, the Tiverton Land Trust is required to do a phase one on all land purchases, a hundred percent of the land purchases. Usually, usually it never finds anything, so it never goes to phase two or three. And um so more and more, the trend in the last ten or fifteen years, because there is legal liability involved here. The trend has been for um more and more um uh uh property transactions to be required to do a phase one. So I think that we should require a phase one for everything.
Alright, well, yeah, remember this applied.
It's it's just a, it's it's a literature um search, um and it can also involve some interviews. Uh it's not a big deal. There is a protocol that defines how it should be done. Um and uh so I think we should, we should require it for everything, whether there are rumors or not.
Well, because.
You never know.
Again.
Everybody, you never know where you might find pollution.
I agree. I strongly agree with Stu it.
Okay, because and remember, this applies to ERSs basically or major land developments. So it's not, you know, it's only if we suspect there's an issue for a minor subdivision, then we would require it. So it's not automatic for every application that comes before us. But, you know, probably, okay.
I I don't, I I would agree with Stu because I think there's more and more, people are are dying, people don't know the history of the these large parcels, even smaller parcels. Uh people go in and they find out, they find oil drums. They, they don't know what's there, even though they have to sign off when they buy it, but.
Absolutely.
Phase one is is important.
Okay. Alright, so we won't qualify it. We'll just leave it as.
Phase one.
I mean, if they want to ask for a waiver, they could ask us for a waiver from it, right? So, uh are there any other comments or questions? Joe or Jennifer or anybody else?
I'm good.
Alright, so I think the only thing on this is I need to add the opening paragraph, make these changes, and then Jennifer can let us know about the twenty cap inch caliper item. I think that's
Yeah.
outstanding item to question on that. Okay, excellent.
Su- Susan.
Yes.
On number six, um
Yep.
Just scratch the word registered professional engineer.
Okay, which, what do you.
Scratch, registered.
Okay. Okay, just a professional engineer, professional answer. Okay. Right. Anything else?
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, alright, now, number four is preliminary plan for a minor subdivision. Alright, so this is where I started with, and this was existing, was this opening paragraph. So this is what basically adapting it to each of those first three. So we have a opening paragraph. And then we need to change the change the wording for the notary um once we get that. Um so we change the GIS to whatever that was, the photo, whatever, photo or satellite.
Susan, just going back to that first paragraph.
Yep.
Change the word registered to licensed. And or professional engineer licensed in the Rhode, state of Rhode Island.
Oh, this part, wait a minute, I'm professional engineer. What do you want? Registered, change to licensed?
Right.
Okay. Alright, so I will change that through all of them too. Okay, make sure that's changed on all of them. Um yeah, so number one, I'll change that. What do we decide, the copy or deed? What do we decide we were doing that? Are we keeping it or getting rid of it? So what do you want to do for this?
I think it's uh.
Oh, we said.
Provide if.
If requested.
Yeah.
Um copy of deed if requested, okay. Okay, um. Then the purpose statement, that's number ten, I'll change that wording. Um I mean, that's number nine. Number ten again is the graphic scale. So are we just doing true north air on graphic scale, minimum of one inch equals a hundred feet, Joe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that carries through on everything.
Alright, so I just want to make sure because this is the first time we got to complain. Alright. Well, that would be, oh, okay, good. Um then changing number fourteen to professional answer there. Number fifteen, location of existing and proposed permanent boundary markers. Alright, then we'll go with that and eliminate the concrete or granite. Then we have FEMA floodplain map on number twenty-three. Oh, you want all that same language to show? Show or provide statement if parcel falls, show or provide statement. Everybody's alright with that, then we'll eliminate those numbers, just the items. The base flood elevation data, that was the NAVD eighty-eight.
Yeah, I sent you a link to the definition of it and how it all works.
Oh, thank you. Okay, alright, so we got that. Um again, number thirty-one was adding the word location with classification. Oh, and number thirty was eliminating phase two or three, so that will stay.
Yeah, you just want phase one, yeah.
One. Uh classification. Oh, and then number thirty-three was doing water and slash wells. Carrying that through. Okay, so now we're going to number forty-three on page four. So this was, um I worked on this a long time so I could understand it. So number forty-three is when we're looking for flagging of wetlands. So that's what that's saying. And I tried, what I decided to do for all the DEM items, the next one, two, three, four items, was not to to eliminate the titles because they tend to change what they call these things over time. So I tried to go with um what what it is we're actually looking for. So the first one is written confirmation from DEM wetlands of the verified wetland boundaries, water courses or coastal features. So what we are asking for in that one is that they do the flagging of the wetlands. Um that's, that's, so that's, we get a letter from DEM that indicates the wetlands have been flagged.
No, no, that's not correct.
No?
Letter from DEM will tell you that they have been reviewed and verified.
Okay, written confirmation that they're verifying.
So the way it works, biologists will go out and flag the wetlands. They submit something to the DEM asking for wetlands verification. DEM will then go out and look at the uh flags, either agree or disagree with the location of each of the flags. If they disagree, they will tell the uh biologist where and how to move that flag. Uh might be ten feet to the northeast um and then it gets resurveyed and shown on the plan. So DEM goes out to verify the, verify the edge as flagged by the biologist.
Wasn't that what it says? They're verifying the wetland boundaries?
It's not bad to have it verified at preliminary stage. I think you want them flagged at master plan and verified at preliminary.
This is the minor, so this is the only stage we have. Yeah, that's what I had was I changed it on on major, that it's it's flagged at master and verified. But this is a preliminary plan for a minor. So they have to be verified at the preliminary plan because all we have left is final after that.
Right, they have to be verified because if those flags are moved, or, you know, they're told to move them, they could actually take a look parcel and render it non-buildable. If you think of it that way.
Right. So we're, so going back to saying this is for preliminary plan for a minor subdivision. We need a let, we, because I've seen those, the letters that say that these are verified wetland flag. That's what we're looking for. Is that what that says? I thought that's what that said. Well, yes. We're saying that we're getting written confirmation from DEM that the flagging of the wetlands have been verified.
Yes, and that's appropriate, I think, for all developments at the preliminary stage because it's the preliminary stage where we get the technical details, the engineering details all sorted out.
Right.
So we really need to have that at 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 the preliminary plan uh stage.
Right, right. So so Joe, is that correct? Saying that we're getting confirmation of the wetland edges being verified preliminary plan for a minor subdivision?
Yeah, confirmation from DEM.
Right.
Yes, uh yeah, you can read it like, I I would have, I'd word it differently, but I think what you've got works.
Okay. Is clear, it will be clear to an engineer applicant? Yeah, I want to make sure that they understood. I mean, basically what you're saying is, and I, that's why I identified it's the wetland section and we're getting verified wetland boundaries. So that's, that's how we get the um. So, alright, so let's go into the next one.
I'm good with that.
Alright, so the next one, number forty-four. I did, I worked on this one, and this one will replace the part that's yellowed out in the head because they're calling it a preliminary determination um if wetlands exist on the property. And it just seemed like that language just kind of gets confusing. So written confirmation that the plans proposed and any off-site construction have been reviewed and that this is where they're looking for a significant or insignificant alteration to the wet. If there's wetlands on the property, or if they find that there's no significant impact, then they get to a Fonzie. So at this stage, we're looking for letters to either confirm that they can do what they want within the wetlands, and it's considered insignificant, and then see insignificant alteration, or if it's considered a significant alteration, or if they find that there's no significant impact. So that has to do with wetlands and and getting DEM permission to have any impact on the wetlands. That's how I read that, and that's what I hope that that says when you read it. Joe.
My concern here is if they go through that and they you know, subdivide the property, place houses, place septic systems, and then get it approved by DEM, and that's what you're asking for, is approved by DEM. Then they come to the board, the board has very little wiggle room to have them change something. Because technically, they won't have to change it. They've got state approval. So if you want to see how the lots are going to be laid out, how the house is going to be laid out, where the driveways are going to be, um and you want input on that, you don't want them to come to you with an approved plan from DEM because at that point, it gets to a a a push and pull situation that they've got a DE, approved DEM permit. They can go out and build it. As long as it can, literally conforms to any subdivision regulations, the board would have no input of, you know, perhaps adding uh a tree line, shrubs, screening, um you know, shifting the location of a of a driveway to um.
Well, so what, so how would you word that? Because, I mean, eventually, before we approve preliminary plan, they have to have DEM approval. They have, they have, we have to get approval from DEM if they're if they're doing any work that impacts the wetlands. So if we're not asking for it when they submit it, how do you word it so that it has to be?
I, you see, that's.
An approval process.
I say it, it's a catch twenty-two. I think the, I think you want to see it so they can give, give their input and prepare that, and then you're correct. They can't get the approval until they do have a DEM approval. But if you ask for it and put it in your checklist that it's required before they even come before the board, I think you've lost your opportunity to weigh in on on the development.
Well, alright, going back to a request for preliminary determination, does that leave the door open more?
No, no, because if determination just tells them their flag, the flagging and the look, uh the, the wetlands are properly identified and then obviously the buffers and stuff, then they should be able to, then they propose of what they're going to do, where they're going to cite homes or whatever they're doing or building. Um and you want input on that. Maybe you'd like to say, you know, can you move the, move the building closer to the road to, you know, and further from the wetland? That's, that's something subjective the planning board could do.
Yes, Joe, Joe, I I I think you're creating a problem where one doesn't exist. I can think of many examples where we have worked with applicants um to actually change the configuration um of their buildings. One uh, one of those examples is Stafford uh uh Stafford Pond View or whatever that that um Harkins uh development is right across from the library, where we got um Harkins to agree to pull the um to pull the the uh footprint of the residence. to pull the, the, uh, footprint of the residence closer to Bulgarmar Shroeg and farther away from Stafford Pond. Um, I've never, I've never noticed the planning board ever having a problem, um, dealing with providing extra protection for a wetland, whether or not, uh, DEM has actually verified the wetland edge. Um, so I, 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 I don't think this is an issue.
Okay, uh, still on that, you said verify the wetland edge, and I completely agree with you. But if they actually have an approved plan.
Approved by who?
DEM.
No, DEM does not, does not approve, um, the whole plan. They, they, they approve the septic system, the OWTS, and, and they, uh, and they have rules and regulations governing how close you can get to bodies of freshwater or saltwater. But, um, I, I don't see a conflict between the Tiverton Planning Board and DEM. Um, I don't see any applicant ever coming to us saying, well, DEM has already approved this, so you can't ask us for that additional protection you want for Stafford Pond, for example. Um, not an issue, I don't think.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
Is there a way you qualify to say that written confirmation from the DM wetland section prior to preliminary plan approval? I don't know if you qualified it by saying, so it's, so they know that they don't have to have it with their initial submission, but before we approve the plan, they have to have it? I don't know if that.
And that would be one way. Again, my, my, my only concern is if they have an RIDM approval from the wetland section for a site, and then they move the building or change the building significantly, change the driveway location, that in itself would require a second submission, a revised plan submission to DEM for a revised approval.
Right.
A, and that's what I'm trying to prevent any problems with. I mean, you know, the developer would have to speak a second submission to DEM and to work with the developer. If, if the planning board and the developer are on the same page as far as what the site will, will look like and how it will be developed, and then he goes to DEM and gets his check in the box that, yeah, DEM is satisfied, uh, that's great. If he gets a check in the box from DEM and the planning board wants more or wants something moved, it could require him to create a hardship for the applicant in having to resubmit to the DEM for a revised, uh, permit.
Jennifer, do you have any ideas?
Uh, I tend to agree with, uh, Joe. I, I, I understand where you're going. You want to make sure that, that any preliminary plan approval is conditional, that they got approval from DEM, but it might be too much for them to do it on the submission of it.
Right, so is there a way to word this? Yeah, I was trying to put these things on the checklist so that you're not relying on individuals to remember to ask for it.
Yeah.
You know, so to have these things on the checklist, then you go through and say, okay, these are all the things they need in order to get approval. These things off, then you're relying on somebody to always remember to ask for it and make sure it's there, even that it's required, but, um, you know, it's just a matter of keeping it, making it very clear so that they can't say, oh, well, you didn't ask for that, even though they probably know they have to have it. It's just kind of.
Do you, do you want to say something?
Would that be part of, when you do the certificate of completeness, like if they don't have it, you would note that they don't have it yet? I mean, because most applicants aren't going to, for a minor subdivision, have that when they submit it, right?
Right.
It would be noted that, that this is something that they need to supply before approval.
Approval will be given.
I know. So do you think there's a way to qualify this with confirmation?
Either qualify, or Jennifer, could this just be, um, you know, on the, on the final approval checklist? Could it just be deferred back to the final? Because, I mean.
Yeah.
That, that's when they, that's when they absolutely need it. Um, and it would also allow the board to give a conditional approv- a preliminary approval subject to a DEM permit. So, I mean, so if everything is said and done in, in the way the planning board, um, wants to see the site developed, they take that information, they send it to DEM, and his approval is only, his, his, uh, planning board approval, preliminary approval is only effective the date in which he receives DEM approval. Then, at that point, he can make application for a final approval, and he'll show up with the plans that you've already seen, already reviewed, already approved, and this one extra piece of paper. Um, and final approval should take no more than ten minutes.
But what if it has to change? We, if we do a conditional preliminary plan approval based on what we think, but then DEM kicks it back and says, that's not going to fly. They're coming back to us at final plan with plan changes. Is that a good idea? I don't know. I mean, because I thought, well, basically what we were trying to do is have everything in line by time we approve preliminary plan. So final plan, when they come back, everything's done, it's just the last few adjustments and all that prior to recording. We're not having to do all the heavy lifting work at the final plan stage. So I don't know if, which, I don't know, was better, which way is safer to make, make the, make it run smoother?
Yeah. I guess it's different with a minor versus a major because you have the, the master plan stage, and you don't have that.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I, I disagree a little bit with that. Um, I, I think that preliminary, um, is very similar, whether it's a minor or a major. Um, it's where we get the, where we really do the, uh, the, the technical and engineering and environmental nitty-gritty work. And I think we really need to hear from DEM at the preliminary plan stage, whether it's a major or a minor. And I completely agree with Susan. What, what I have sensed over the years of going through these applications is that we get into trouble if we allow the applicant to say, oh, don't worry about it, we'll give it to you later. Um, and then we get to, to, uh, we, we end up approving a preliminary plan with all kinds of conditions, and then that makes the final plan a, a lot more difficult because we're just delaying making decisions. We, when we approve a preliminary plan, we need to have all of our ducks in a row. We have to have everything in really good order. Um, and so I completely agree with Susan. The more we request at preliminary plan stage, the better.
Well, I think too, we're just asking for written confirmation, so if we add the qualifier saying from DM wetland section prior to preliminary plan approval, that plans the proposed subdivision.
If I may weigh in.
Yeah.
I think Susan is, is correct in asking for all of this information. But if I, I recall in the past, we have had many minor subdivisions come in, and the engineer will say, oh, I've submitted it, and many times we've found they haven't submitted it. And we give them a prelimi- a conditional preliminary contingent upon receipt of that. And then when they come in for final, we have it because they're working it out with us. And, you know, we leave it on their discretion that they have, uh, submitted it, and many times they haven't.
Well, so what you're saying is it could.
It's for the final, right? I'm sorry. It comes for the final. It has to be there. The approval. Yes, it has to be there for final because we gave a, them a conditional.
Right.
That's my recall.
Well, that's saying then it could, it could be moved to the final plan.
But I think.
No, Susan, I like the way you had just said it, though. Preliminary approval, um, confirmation from RIDM is required for preliminary approval, but it's not required for the application of the preliminary, um, or submitting preliminary plans.
Because odds are, when they submit a preliminary plan, they're not going to have DEM approval at any.
That's correct.
Because I know if they do it, I, why would think the engineers would know if they're going to do it and we're going to do changes, they're going to have to go back. So they're going to wait.
No, so that's why I don't think you want confirmation. You want the confirmation on the checklist, but clarify that confirmation is required for approval.
Yes, I completely agree with that. I wasn't suggesting that that be made a, a condition of the application itself. But I, but I think applicants need to be put on record that they are required to, to, to have that confirmation from DEM before we give them approval, uh, for the, uh, for the preliminary plan.
And that, that's fair. I think that's.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Okay. All right, all right, so we worked that one out. Okay. So then, number forty-five. The way I went with this one, confirmation of DM Office of Water Resources. So I interpreted this one as they're looking for the stormwater management. So I didn't put a title to it because they like, DM likes to change the name of those things, like it, whether it's Ripdies or Wat- WQW whatever. So that's why I left it, tried to leave it generic to say, so what we're looking for in this one is that DM has approved their stormwater management. There, so it's onsite, blah, 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 right? Is that right, Joe? Did I get that?
No, I, I think this one would go the same way.
Okay.
Confirmation from DEM is required prior to approval.
Right, yeah.
Um, yeah, I mean, i- if they propose an open pond, um, and, you know, through discussions and something with the planning board, it's all felt as though subsurface infiltration would work better for the town and all those concerns. The developer says, oh, yeah, I can, I can do that, um, and that's why you don't want the approval when he makes application for the preliminary, but you require that approval prior to approval of the preliminary plan, if that makes sense.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think that way, because, yeah, they don't have it when they initially apply usually anyway, as they go through the process with us, but. Well, that's why I thought, if we get all these DEM up, things that we need clearly laid out, then we know what we're looking for and what they're supposed to do. So the last one, number forty-six, is for onsite septic. So I finally think I get it. So subdivision soil suitability, that's saying that the ground is suitable for septic, but it's not showing this specific permit. So if they do specific permits, like say for four lots, they'll have those. But if they don't, haven't gotten the specific permits yet, pulled the permits, then they just need the subdivision soil suitability from, from DEM. Is that right, Joe?
I'm reading through it again.
Yeah.
Again, yeah, I think they need the soil suitability, but not the approved septic system design. Uh, and a lot of times, yeah, and I think we've heard this from applicants and engineers before, those septic system designs are based on what they're assuming to be a three-bedroom home, and they're only valid for two years. If that lot doesn't sell for five years, and the person wants to do a four-bedroom, they have to re- reapply anyway. Um, so I think you need, you need confirmation from DEM that a, an OWTS is
That's possible.
For that lot.
Right.
Um, but you don't need to see the exact type. I mean, it could be one of these new high-tech things, it could be the old-fashioned trenches. Um, DEM actually gets to make that call more so than, than the town.
Right. But it gave the option, because sometimes they do submit permits, so I have, so I have both.
The only thing I'm thinking is you may want to consider consolidating all of these things into one item. RIDM approval, um, from all the different departments is required prior to uh, approval of the preliminary plan.
Well, I'd rather keep them separate because they try to provide something different. And I think for planning board members to get familiar with this, or to be clear to the applicants, we have flagging of wetlands, we have significant or insignificant alterations to wetlands, we have the stormwater plan, and then we have the septic. I like that because it broke it down into four specific DEM permits that if there's wetlands on the property, you know, if there's no wetlands, then you don't have to look for those first two, but it's, they're there, so we know.
That's fine.
Permits we're looking for each application.
Having it separate provides a, a nice tracking system.
Yeah, it keeps, I, I just want a very.
And it's, and it's far less confusing for members of the planning board.
Right.
So I completely agree with Susan.
And then the last one is the, I don't know if this is worded right, written confirmation for environmental site assessment review or mitigation. So that's if it does have, require one, then we should be getting something from DEM for either their review or mitigation.
Prior, prior to approval.
Oh, prior to, yeah, prior. Okay. Right. All right. Um, so we have the, then we were looking for water confirmation, and I have included both water from the water department, and then I was going through some of it, I realized you're looking for water confirmation or confirmation from the fire department for, um, pu- public safety measures. So if that applies to that subdivision, I put that in. Um. Hi, Rick, is he still here? Oh, shoot, we just lost him. He was here because we finally got to. So what he commented on, and I carried throughout, um, that he wanted for number, what is that, number fifty, when we get to the town standards for sewer septic plan and design to eliminate sewer septic design. Um, I think Joe asked that same question, um, basically because DEM does that or else the different wastewater, so it's flow, the plant, estimate town standards for stormwater control design and street design. That's what DPW will be looking at, and so I'm just reviewing it and signing on to it. Guess I lost, I lost him. He was here, um. Let's see. Oh, yeah, and then number fifty-two is another comment Rick had, um, that the director of public works that for any connection or blah, 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 within a town road or other right of way was approvable. I don't know if approvable is the right word, but he's just saying that they want to know that, that the connection is um, is possible, I guess, to clarify that. Um, okay. Now we get to numbers fifty-four, fifty-five. So this was a question I had, I was trying, it's been a lot of time on this, trying to figure out, because this has to do with surety. So the way our subdivision regs write it is it gives the developer the option of not putting up, posting a surety for the project, but reading the subdivision regs again, what it says is they have, if they don't post a surety, they have to do, complete all the infrastructure before they come back for final plan. We've never, I, I've never seen it done that way. I don't know if it ever has been. Um. So that was number fifty-four. I tried to figure out how to word that. Um. Now wait a minute, fifty-four, no, that went, no, that, okay. So number fifty-four is saying that if they do put up post, put up a surety for infrastructure, that it's reviewed by DPW, and we require those funds prior to final plan recording. That seems pretty straightforward, but number fifty-five is the one that written confirmation from the developer's intent to complete the proposed infrastructure improvements at their risk posting no surety. So Rick had asked, who pays for it if it's incomplete? And, um, yeah, I don't have the answer to that. Um. But I did put the note in there that, so I don't know, I guess that the discussion is, do we want to still allow? But I did put the note in there that, so I don't know, I guess that the discussion is, do we want to still allow? A developer. To proceed a- after preliminary plan approval to do infrastructure improvements without posting any surety. Because the way the subdivision regs are written right now, they are allowed to do that, that's why. But I, that's why I've tried to enforce that a preliminary plan, everything should be done. Because once you approve preliminary plan, they can go start clearing, building roads. And putting in infrastruc- some infrastructure. Doing their stormwater and and roads.
I don't think they can build roads, but the other things.
The way the subdivision regs says it, infrastructure improvements. I think it's what it's written, how it's written.
Can, um and I defer to council on it. I think they can build it, but I think the town would want to require that um. On-site inspections occur by a third party, whether it be the town's consultant, the D P W. Um or a uh literally a third party, uh because. In the end, if the town is going to take ownership of those public improvements. You don't want any part of them unless you know that they've been built to s- uh town standards.
But the way it's meant is that they can do it without posting surety and they're doing it at their own risk. So then you come in after the fact and that's when you inspect it. And then if it's not up to town standards, then they have to go through the cost of fixing it.
You have to inspect it while it while they're putting down the asphalt and the compaction, it's really important on those roads.
Absolutely, uh Rosemary, I agree with you and and that's why I say. Um if they just, you know, if they're legally entitled to go build the road, that's fine. But you need to protect that the town still wants some type of oversight. Because eventually you are gonna take ownership of that road. And if you go out and have to do pavement cores. Um on a road that was built with no inspections and you do find something uh wrong. Whether it's insufficient pavement or failing pavement. You've probably already got uh homeowners living on that road, using that road. And there will be public outcry to make that road a um, you know, town-accepted road, so that way the town plows it. And that's something that, you know, people are gonna push for. Um in voting years, they're really gonna push for it because whoever gets elected is gonna say, I promise you'll get the road accepted. And quite honestly, the town doesn't want that road if it was built poorly or not according to standards. The only way to protect that is to require. Um onsite inspection. Uh by either the town or a third party. Um and reports uh, you know, furnished to the town uh prior to approval. But again, I I think legal may wanna weigh in on that, but I think that's really important to do.
We, historically, we had one that comes to mind that went in, as you say, was it a private road? And then it through the out the years, it kept being developed and developed. And then a deal was done with the town council and it was accepted. And it was not in the best, and then we had two other ones that the developer went belly up and the town had to take over. So I agree with you, Joe.
Well, yeah, and part of it is that the way it's worded in subdivision regs, it says public and or private infrastructure. And I know since I've been here that when it's private roads. Consultants have been told they can't inspect, so you probably remember that. That they're doing that prior to recording and so I just I'm trying to figure out how we can word this. To make it clear to the applicants that, one, I think, one is if they they post a surety. That gets reviewed by D P W and steer, once we accept their numbers for the infrastructure. Then they can post um a surety prior to final plan recording. The messy one is if they choose to start doing that and they're, they do that before final plan. To avoid having to post surety. How do we? How do we protect the town, I guess? Rick, you're back. Uh this is the discussion, this is the questions you had about who was paying, if you've heard all of that, that um. Joe was saying, um, I mean, if we wanna keep that in as an option. Then we just have to make sure we get really clear language on this so that we know how to enforce it.
Right, right, and if if you'll take comments, Sue, I I would like to offer a few comments on that. Uh thank you, the. In my com- either my computer or Zoom or whatever kicked me out, so uh. So I was out for a little bit, but I've heard the last few minutes, obviously, but I was probably out of the meeting for maybe. Five minutes or so, maybe three minutes, but in regards to, it's not the the amount of money. For any private or public uh improvements that the contractor developer has done. That D P W is is concerned, it's whatever is left. If he decides he's not going to finish it, so that surety, so I'm not worried right now, D P W is not worried about. The surety if it's, if the work is all done, it's what's left. And the, but the biggest aspect is what Joe a- and Rosemary have mentioned. And that is inspection, it's really, it's possible, but very expensive. And then if you're having trouble uh having anybody pay, why do you wanna go through that extra expense? It's very, it's basically impractical to inspect after the fact. You don't even know if the subgrade that he excavated, that elevation was suitable underneath. You don't know if the gravel he put in was acceptable, how many cores can you take to to see? Whether all the gravel was placed correctly, how many compactions can you take after the asphalt is down? And taking cores on the asphalt, the binder, the surface core, basically impractical. The only way either it has to be clearly written and enforceable. That if inspections are not done, the road will never be taken taken over by the town. For any services for maintenance, I don't know, Mike might be able to weigh in on. Whether or not you could actually write that in so that it would never be taken over. Because after the fact, if the pressure is put on. Ba- basically, Cottrell Farm had tr- trouble, William Barton, the town had to pay for the surface cost. You want all the inspections done ahead of time.
So nothing prevents the town, I mean, you can always write that in, but a town council can always reverse it, I mean. I think, you know, you can't buy the town forever, if another council wants to come in and they wanna accept the road, they can do so. But it's better to, I I agree, it's get better to get the inspections upfront. That's why you have the surety.
I mean, do you think it's better to not allow this, or is that violating some rule or something? Like saying everybody has to post surety?
It's a safe way, I think, yeah, I don't think it breaks any rule, I think it's it's protection of the town to make everyone propose surety, especially on roadways. But we do we do that now, I mean, do do, it's very rare that we don't take a surety for a road, is it, Rick?
Uh I don't really get involved too much with the surety so far, so I don't know if the town has ever allowed it. In the last two years, we we certainly encourage the sureties. I don't know what the regulation is though on making it mandatory. And again, the surety isn't as big a deal to me as some kind of teeth that no work would be done. And I don't want them to call it private and say, we can't do inspections. And then afterwards say, I I would like the road accepted. Uh roads are a high-maintenance, high-cost item. And if they're not done correctly and the drainage, how are you gonna inspect the drainage? After the pipes are already installed and and backfilled, so there has to be something in there that says. Regardless if it's gonna be private or public, if you want this uh to be an exte- uh if you want this development to go through. You have to allow inspections.
Yeah, because I I mean, I I agree, because if it's a private road and you're causing flooding in a basement and after the developer leaves. It's gonna, they're gonna come to the town anyway, they're not going after the developer, the developer will be long gone, they're gonna look to the town to help them out.
I I agree, I I mean, I've actually had that experience on the town that I live in and. We put down, we we approved the plan saying the road shall never ever become. A public road or receive public services because they didn't build it to standards. They did not build it to eighty-eight standards. Right now, the town in North Smithfield plows, maintains, um runs school buses. And everything else down that road because everybody in that development went to the town council with a petition. To accept their road and so that the way they got all the town services, everybody else was getting. And those roads are now public. And they don't meet any type of standard.
I mean, it seems like the simplest thing to do would be to eliminate the option that they do anything before the final plan's recorded and they posted.
Is there an option? I- is there an option, Sue, or or Mike, to, if you're going to do that, make it a mandatory H O A? Before you even start and the H O A owns the road?
That's how it works now, uh Rick, the H O A is usually form in the uh developer is usually the president of it. This is how we ran into problems with Daniel T. Church. And that one, if you recall, you weren't living in town, but that was another hullabaloo.
Can you make the preliminary approval subject to um town inspection?
Think so, yeah, of course, right, I mean.
So, so I mean, if you if you do that.
Well, it would be final approval, wouldn't it be final approval subject to town inspection?
No, because what I'm hearing is, and and developers are. Have the ability to go out and build a private road upon preliminary approval. So, um. On all applications, whether it be a private road or a prelimi- a uh public road proposed. The condition of the approval is no public, no. I wanna say public infrastructure and they're gonna say it's private, but. Any roadway drainage infrastructure. Will require inspection, um and bas- basically for the health and safety of the uh of the community. If you tie it to that, is a private road. You still have have the public driving on it.
The other thing is like, this is, I mean, this is not, these are checklist, right, so this is guidance. This is not a.
Well, yeah, because this reflects what's in the regs, it's a reflection of what's in the regs, so.
It's the regs that govern, this checklist is is just.
And that's how it was listed, it was listed before as either of the following, it gave you two options. To do it, you know, before you record or to do it. To or to provide a surety, so I was trying to flush that out a little bit. The easiest thing to do would be eliminate them doing anything until they posted a surety, I'd rather just see them post a surety, I just don't know if we can do that. We'd have to change the subdivision regs, if it's not illegal to do that, so that's all, so developers can't go out and start doing infrastructure preliminary plan. You have to wait till their plans are recorded and their surety's been posted. But, you know, I mean, that that would simplify things from, because you know what happens with the the developers is they. They don't wanna put up any money, so they say, sure, I'll go build my road and do my stormwater. And and they do.
But, but see, I think what Mike was saying, this is a checklist, does this even belong on the checklist or just more so in the regulation?
Um, something does, because we're the ones required to 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 collect the sureties. I think we're the ones, because if we don't review and 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 record the surety, who's gonna do it?
Possibly, possibly the escrow is gonna be more important on that checklist to make sure there's funds in there. With the town's consultant to do the inspections that you're going to require. Because D P W right now doesn't have the resources to do the inspections on these developments.
Well, that's what we do, like at a pre-construction meeting, we have them set up an escrow. You know, so that then there's onsite inspections during the construction, like you did with um Cook Farm, right? I mean, that that's the way it seems to run a little smoother and there's some control with it, it's just the idea of letting developers go out and do it. Once they get preliminary plan approval, then it seems like we're having a harder time tracking it and enforcing it. So I don't know if it's possible to eliminate that option. Would simplify everything.
I think we should just try to, let's let's flag it and take a look, another look at it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you'll see it's in the subdivision regs under the guarantees, it's pretty much the wording and. Yeah, so, alright, um. Oh, so, okay, number sixty-three on page six, that was the other. Thing we need to get clarified was the um cross-section, the scales for cross-sections. I don't know if looking at what Joe sent me, we just include, call it uh. Proposed streets or street extensions and dimensions, profiles and cross-sections at a twenty scale. I don't know, would that do it, Joe, say at a twenty scale or as directed?
Well, again, a. I don't, I don't think, I don't think the board should be. Um so restrictive as to stating what scale, because different projects require. Or a more suitable for, you know, a a variety of scales, um. The profiles are typically dri- uh drawn at one-fifth the horizontal scale in the vertical direction. And that's why it would be, if there was a forty-scale drawing, the vertical scale would be eight. Um that a lot of times can be changed to ten because it's easier. Um twenty and four is, you know. My preference and probably the preference of most engineers, twenty scale horizontally, forty four scale vertically. The cross-sections also would typically typically not absolute. Follow the same vertical scale, um so on a twenty scale and drawing, you'd have. Twenty and four for the profile and then you'd have four for the cross-sections. Um site, site engineers love to use thirty scale. Um because it it fits a little bit more on the plane, but yet still provides enough detail. So I've never seen a six-scale vertical. If it were the, were thirty scale horizontally, you'd probably see a five-scale vertically. Um and then the cross-sections again would be a five scale. So there's so many combinations, um.
Should we just eliminate them at a scale and then specific? And just use it as a descriptive thing?
At uh common scales, um. Common, commonly accepted scales.
I mean, do you wanna even include that if you're saying that we don't really dictate scales, just?
I don't, I don't think you should dictate scales because.
Play profiles and cross-sections, including typical cross-sections and paved areas? I mean, just eliminate talking about scales at all. We're asking for profiles and cross-sections and just eliminate any, any.
Drawn, drawn to, I mean, you could be very, you could be vague and say drawn to scale.
And then drawn to scale? Provide cross-sections drawn to scale?
And that opens the door for a variety of scales. You'll get some engineers that give you some real screwball scales, but I think most of us.
Well, that's part of what your critique does, is to clarify any question or issue.
Most engineers are gonna default to a twenty and four scale because it's easy and where it's all computer-generated. and where it's all computer generated. It, it works.
Alright.
If they have to change it, again, it's computer generated. It's simply just change the scale and replot it.
So just eliminate again the one inch equals forty feet and one inch equals forty feet vertical?
Yes.
Okay, and just say profiles and cross-sections drawn to scale. Alright. Alright, that'll simplify it. I'll carry that through on all of them because that was another one that needed to get. Alright, so the next one, Rick, it's back to you again, number sixty-seven. It's the discussion about streetlights, so under proposed utility plan, where it includes streetlights.
Yes, I'm happy to comment on that. So my knowledge, the reading the ordinance, because it's come up before at various times when people have requested streetlights. To my knowledge, only the town council can approve new lights. And in fact, there's, I forget the number, whether it's a hundred or a hundred and fifty, streetlights are turned off and have been for a long time in town to save money. So, and also if they're not installed on public utility poles, DPW nor the town has the resources to do any repairs or maintenance on them. There are a thousand, fourteen hundred bucks a pop for these decorative light masts, not counting the fixture and the, the bulb, et cetera, and the installation. So DPW's position is if lights are desired in a sub, in a subdivision, unless the town council approves them, they should be on private land and the town should incur no cost.
Alright, so a lot of that is beyond our purview. I just wanted to, to refer because I don't know if it's the, if we need to change the subdivision reg. So if you go to twenty-three fifty-eight, it has a section B on streetlights. And it says, "The planning board acting with a recommendation from the chief of police and the director of public work shall determine if a proposed development or subdivision requires streetlights. When required, the applicant shall present a plan for their installation, blah, blah, blah." So my question is. So if we have. With me, not at me, right? So if we have a subdivision and part of our, and we say, do you show streetlights? Do we not ask for that anymore? For them to show streetlights, and if they need streetlights, do they petition the town council for that after the fact? I don't know how it would work if it's not part of our plan.
For new development, it is our, in our purview. What Rick was talking about has been existing. When a, when a citizen comes in and petitions the town council, then they do it. However, as you just mentioned, in the past, it has been the DPW director and the police chief that usually have gone out there and said, okay, we need one. And they've been very sparing as far as the, uh, streetlights, especially when they have to pay upfront for the usage. So, uh, I mean, there are some places that need them, some that don't.
Well, so if, if an applicant submits a plan that has a streetlight on it, then isn't it, wouldn't it be just then our course to get a recommendation from DPW and the police chief? If they recommend those or not, and if they don't, then they would be eliminated. And at that time, then we would make the specification or, or Rick would identify the location of them. Because a lot of what you said, Rick, I think is valid. I just don't think it's part of a checklist. I think if that goes into a subdivision reg or part of a munich code or ordinance or something, but. And I think that, so that the council and everybody's aware of that. I think we change it so that if it's their custom lights, then the homeowners association is responsible for them. But if we include that as part of our utility plan, then you would have the prerogative to say you don't recommend the streetlights. Correct, and then they could be deleted from that plan. Or if you say that they are required, then at that time, is that when you could clarify to the applicant what their responsibility was? I don't know, would that, would that work or does it need to be spelled out somewhere clear? I don't have your audio.
Contrary to lights. Can you hear me alright?
Yeah, I can. Can you start over?
Yes, it sort of seems to be contrary, you know, to practicality that the town has maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty lights turned off and then say, well, let's install some new ones. It, if lights are gonna be installed, they should be, I mean, somebody can disagree and, and offer some, you know, some evidence or some logic, but they should be an HOA, just like the stormwater maintenance. But to, to have a light paid on a new development and have other people without lights doesn't seem to make sense.
Well, if I can add to that, uh, Rick, I think the ones that are turned off are probably in the north end or where there are a lot of lights. I'm not sure where they are. In a new development, you have houses that are spaced out, especially down in the, in the southern part of the town. Uh, and in the new developments, we've, we recommend underground utilities. Can you please tell me if they have to be a specialized pole if it's an underground utility? Or can it be a regular pole?
Well, well, the hiccup, the hiccup with that rosemary is that if, God forbid, somebody gets in an accident and hits a utility pole that's owned by Narragansett, you know, Narragansett Electric or Verizon.
Right.
That pole is replaced by the utility. And then all that prism, the town's, you know, light maintenance vendor has to put up is the, the light arm and the, the light fixture and the light bulb. And a lot of times those are still intact. So it's a minimal cost to the town. What happens is with the decorative lights, you own, whoever, not the utility, either the HOA or the town owns all the way back to wherever the fuse is. And underground electric, of course, is, is hard to, inexpensive to replace. And those decorative poles, one of the reasons Cartel Farms is, still has a, a pole that's damaged. Nobody confessed to hitting that. And the cost is something like a thousand or fourteen hundred dollars for the stand. Those decorative lights are very expensive. The, the town really isn't in a position to take on those costs. And, and I'm not sure for safety, it's a case of, most people's headlights work. So when you're driving down the road, any time, any number of places, you can drive down the road with your headlights and see everything. That's the way it is a hundred percent of the time. So if the subdivision has a, a safety factor as far as burglaries or, you know, people walking around, then the HOA can install lights of any type that they want as long as they're within the subdivision regs or the town ordinance. And the HOA maintains them and the, the people can have lights on their houses, up their driveway, et cetera.
Thank you.
Well, I guess my question is, do we include this? It's just a matter of. I mean, I, I, it just seems like we should still allow them to put streetlights on the plans. But then I think, Rick, you and chief have, have a prerogative during the course of our review to say, these aren't necessary. And if they make a strong case, they really want them. You know, find out, we need to find out if they're doing traditional or, or specialty lamps. And if they are, let them know that they're going, their homeowners association is responsible for them, not the town.
I, I think even, if I understand Rick correctly, though, I think the bigger policy issue is looks like the town is not putting up any streetlights. And I kind of agree with Rick. If we're turning off lights in existing neighborhoods where you're building a new subdivision and you're saying to those people, oh, yeah, we'll allow you to put lights. Obviously, the town's not gonna pay for those. It's unfair for the town to pay for those lights, but not the individuals who are, you know, existing subdivisions. So I guess it has to be very clear from the very beginning that any new lights will be part of, you know, if they're gonna, if you're gonna propose lights, whether it's a review or not, they're gonna be paid by the developer. And they're gonna be maintained and the electric charge, I guess, associated with those lights will be paid by the association. So what, what we're basically saying is that, as a matter of course, and maybe we have to update the regulations, but any new streetlights in any new development has to be paid for by the, you know, paid for by the developer and maintained by the homeowners association and paid for by the homeowners association or electric. And so there'll be, I mean, so they could propose them or not. I mean, there is a, I mean, everyone likes the idea of a homeowners association, but from a legal perspective, they're disastrous. I mean, they're awful. No one, you know, you get fights, no one wants to pay the charge. It's, it's, you know, it doesn't really work.
Right. Well, is there a way that they can calculate? Like, say, if you put two streetlights in a minor subdivision, that you could calculate with their annual expenses? Or would they have special meters that they would? I mean, how would, how would you?
They would be, they would have to be metered to somebody and it'd have to be metered to the association. They wouldn't, yeah.
Alright, so if we keep streetlights in there and we're saying that the town council doesn't have to approve it or they do?
Oh, I think, I think what Rick is suggesting is that the town council does not, I mean, it makes, I think, I mean, correctly found wrong, Rick. You're saying that the town council is approving any new streetlights. And I think Rose, Rosemary said that it was only for, you know, existing subdivisions or, you know, people in town. But if you have that policy as a townwide policy, how does it make sense to say, well, if I have an existing home on a street, on Main Street, and I can't, I can't have my streetlight turned on, but if I buy a house in a new subdivision, the town is gonna pay for my light and to light that and allow lights to be there? It, it's, it's just inconsistent. It's unfair.
And, and there may be some overriding, uh, you know, ordinance that says the planning board or the zoning board or some board has authority to approve it without town council approval. But for instance, we had one on a side road off of Boogamash not too long ago. And it was turned down because right in the ordinance, it says the town council has to approve the lights and they will only approve it if, and I think it might go A, B, C, D, uh, if those provisions are met, such as nothing else can be found to, uh, take the place of that safety feature, if signs won't take care of it, et cetera, et cetera. So it, it doesn't say just the town council has to approve it. It gives actual stipulations upon which the town council can approve new streetlights. I don't know the history of why they made it so stringent, uh, but I suspect cost certainly was a, a, probably one of the big elements.
I can add to that too, Rick. You're entirely right. Because I've been to many council meetings and sat there as people have come in and made a request for all, all reasons. And then it's been deferred over to the police chief and the DPW director. And then you don't hear any more about it. You know, we have rules and regs, but it's selective.
Jennifer, do you have any comment?
Not really. I think, uh, you know, it's more Rick's issues, you know, BW.
Well, considering this is a minor subdivision, should we just eliminate streetlights? And then the note caveat that follows it? I mean, Rick, would that simplify your life, make things easier?
Well, we're, we're not worried about simplifying my life. It's, and it's not just on minor or major or preliminary or master plan. It's an overall, uh, concept of, uh, we have to determine who, who can approve lights, uh, streetlights and under what conditions. And the big factor is underground electric makes lighting very expensive because they're no longer on utility poles where the utilities take the cost and bear the cost of any kind of accident where the light is damaged, except for the, the, the arm, et cetera. That's the big cost, even more so than the, uh, electric cost, uh, to light the lamp, especially when it's LED.
But I'm looking at it that as a checklist item, I mean, we can't, we can't resolve all that. I think that's something that has to be in a subdivision reg or an ordinance. So my, my question is just for saying for minor subdivisions, which are five lots or less, will we just eliminate streetlights and that caveat? And if they wanna propose streetlights, then you could make your recommendation at that point, but we wouldn't include them to. I mean, if, if with it on the checklist, it's kind of making it like they have to include. Well, I guess maybe they don't have to, but. I just don't know how to address all that because it's complex. And it's really more than just a checklist item, what, what all you're trying to, you know, get, get across here, so. That's why I'm wondering if we just eliminate streetlights, then it eliminates it from this, from at least minor subdivisions? I don't know. That helps us for a major subdivision or commercial development. I mean, it still has, has to, to get clarified unless we keep it like this here. And then, you know, it's just each time an applicant comes before us with streetlights on it, then we have to go through this. But we don't have a subdivision reg written that really, or an ordinance that really backs it up. Unless you say that's town policy. So it's just a matter of somebody being in place every time to address, address these stipulations to the applicant and it comes up that we have streetlights.
Yes, it's just reviewing the checklist is what, you know, brought it to, you know, light, so to speak. It's been an issue that, as far as this discussion goes, it's been, uh, been discussed for a while now. It's just since I'm reviewing the checklist, it was brought to my attention that I should bring this up again. And it really, I, I don't disagree. It has to be addressed in the regulation or the subdivision rules, not just on the checklist.
Right. Alright, so, so I don't know. What is, what should we do for it on the checklist? What do you wanna do? Let's leave everything as is for now? Until, uh, until there's a subdivision reg that's rewritten? Because I, I don't know, I don't know how to clarify this. I don't know what the best way is to clean it up.
It, it's a good idea to show that if they want streetlights, they have to show it on the, you know, as a checklist, they have to show it on the plan so the discussion can take place early on during any of the reviews.
Okay. Okay. Well, if we do that and we keep the note on there, then it could be any, future maintenance would be managed by the homeowners association? I'm gonna add that in there. Because it talks about acquisition and installation and electric bill for thirty-six months. But then talk about any ongoing maintenance would be managed by the homeowners association?
You, you might wanna just say that these, all these items, whether it's sewer, streetlights, et cetera, have to be, uh, addressed, have to be, have to follow, have to follow the subdivision of whatever regulations. And you address it in the regulation, don't even bring up the fact that they, they have to pay thirty-six months in advance. Just have all that addressed in the regulation and say simply that as part of your review on the checklist, you have to make sure you followed all the regulations for the streetlights and everything else that's listed in that item.
Alright. Well, until that stuff is in, well, it is in the regs actually. It talks about it for eighteen months or longer. Doesn't say thirty-six months. The regulations say eighteen months or longer. I don't know how somebody came up with the thirty-six months. So I don't know if you wanna keep it. Estimated utility bill for eighteen months. So I don't know. If you, if, if you wanna eliminate that, you can just say, you know, this followed, you know, according to the subdivision regulations? Anyone, anyone help?
That, that's what I would do.
Eliminate that and just say, use the subdivision, I could use section twenty-three fifty-eight. Um, according to that's the requirements. Alright, I don't hear.
Reasonable to me.
Okay. Okay. Alright, Aldrian. Put that into words and have it for the next time. Um, let's see, I still didn't get my numbering right. We've pointed that out and then, um. Number proposed. Who's talking? Oh, is that? So. Um, oh, then again, the last one is the proposed deed restrictions. That was the one I was looking for some help on for language. Which language you want to use for number, it was number 66. It's about the documents, the legal documents that need to be submitted. And if Mike, if you already thoughts on what language is better, it's only two different options.
Well, again, we, we review these for, we don't get into the. I got a little nervous when I'm like, it's not for me to sign off on them, right? It's, it's more for me to make sure that if, if they, if there's a covenant, you know, they properly recorded. If there's a homeowner association, it reflects what they're supposed to do, but. But, you know, we, we usually do it as a preliminary plan and we do that as a matter of course. Now, is this, what's the, what's the, the black language is the current language?
Yeah, black is what's existing. I think I added, I kind of identified specifics in the red. And then I found this other language. So I didn't know if that was.
I like, I like the blue because it's more broad and it's depending on, depending on what we need, you know?
Right, right. Yeah, it's basically just a preliminary plan. That's when any legal documents are going to be recorded or reviewed. Um, so they can record it.
Instead of, you know, instead of being exhaustive list, it's, you know, any, any legal documents that we think we need will, you know, we can ask for. And then you give examples such as including but not limited to, right? So, yeah.
Well, I had, it says including, but it doesn't say but not limited.
No, no, including is fine. You know, I, I, you mean including as, as an example.
Alright, you don't have to say but not limited. Okay.
And do we always, just to curious, do we always take open spaces through a warranty deed?
I don't know.
Do we always? No.
Usually it's a quick claim deed, right Jen? I mean, I don't know. A warranty deed is a lot more expensive because it's the warranting that they actually own it and the warranting that it's got good title and. I don't know. There's a difference between a quick claim deed, basically say, we're giving you what we have and if we have nothing and a warranty deed says we're warrant that we own it. Let's get a clear title and we have the authority to give it to you. The difference.
Oh, you recommend it just says a quick.
Just say a deed and we can figure out what kind of deed we want.
Oh, a deed, just a deed, okay. Yeah, that kind of stuff I don't know. Alright. Okay. Alright, you will try to, my best to go through all of these. Comments and incorporate them. I don't know. Does Jennifer or Mike, do you have any other comments or Rick? Or Joe? Anybody else?
Not, not on this.
Okay, yeah, so we need, we need the changed notarized letter, the notary language changed again. And then all the other comments. Okay. Alright, let's try and get through the final. So the checklist five is minor subdivision final plan. So again, that notary language. I mean, I put it on the final plan just in case there was any change in status between preliminary and final plan. Most likely it would usually be not applicable because it's already been addressed in, in either preliminary for a minor or master plan for a. Whatever, but I just included it in case of any change in status. So we just need that language corrected. Um, again, the GIS language we changed. Of the copy of deed title. Wire, I think, that language.
So on, on the notary thing, we can go with the language, but on this one, I think you're right. We're at the final plan. You know, you know, if, 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 you know, if, if, if required or if necessary, right? We don't need it every, I mean, there might not be any changes.
Right, well, that would, then they would just put NA, that it's not applicable, right? Do you want me to put if required?
If necessary, but that's fine. You can leave it like that. You can leave it like that.
I can add.
I know you want to be consistent. That's fine. It's better off to be.
Yeah, but I just figured if it doesn't apply, then you just put not applicable. But I know some people just like to put NA on everything, so. Alright, so the purpose statement will change that. The graphic scale will change that. Um, class one survey, the boundary markers. See, all these then are all the same, all the way through setbacks. The FEMA floodplain map, again, all those changes will come through. Rick, we did address, it goes through the number 30. I don't know if you were here when we did that, you know, the location width and classification of existing public private. So I included that on all the, the checklist that you were asking for, the classification of the streets that are listed.
Thank you.
Yep, and then water wells, that's all the same. And then I guess Joe was saying that where number, he's like number 32, number 33, where I have immediately adjacent. That was existing language that I just carried through. I guess immediately and adjacent are probably redundant. That was subjective. So if I want to eliminate immediately, where it has immediately adjacent on a number of these. I went through looking for all the final reports on things, final everything. We get to number 49, then the final plans profiles cross sections of street or street station. Whatever the wording was at a scale. At a common scale or whatever it was, the wording, we decided, so eliminate that others, that other wording. Out on this one, I also put including all pedestrian facilities. Um, or cross sections, that's like sidewalks. Forgot to put that on preliminary plan. Then again, there's the streetlights and circle that. I guess we're going to leave that for now. Number 35 is the blue, that's the language you wanted to keep and cross out warranty. And I don't know if there were any other. Comments or changes anybody had. And so you can see a lot of these then I went through. It's basically then just pulls through everything that we need as a checklist easily for the final plan.
I think we're, we're good.
Okay.
I'm just looking through one last, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know, it's all that one. We're just going back to. Actually, I just pulled out Mike's comment again about. Okay, so are they very good, then we'll, and then, yeah, 55, we'll use the blue wording and cross out warranty. So that does that. Everybody okay to keep going?
I think we're getting tired.
I know, I know I am. So I don't know what.
I'm getting there.
I know. I don't know what you guys want to do. Actually.
It's a good stopping place, you know?
Agree.
I was just looking at one of these other ones in the back, maybe. Yeah, it's probably not. I'm pretty tired. So I know this, we've got to get to.
So here's my suggestion, and I know we, we talked about this and I put it in my original comments. So these, these checklists are really a guide for the administrative officer and the planning board. And by putting him in the reg, because they're in the regulations now, we, we really have to kind of go through this arduous process of. Going through in a public body. But my suggest, as a public meeting, but my suggestion would be at the next meeting, you take the vote as well. To remove all these checklists from the rules and regulations and make them as guidelines. That will then allow Sue and the rest, maybe the planning and anybody, planning planner. And anyone and myself and, and the engineer and any department head or even, you know, kind of meeting in a round table, go through them. Uh, make the change, you know, make, you know, the changes. They definitely need to be updated. And then, you know, bring them back before the body and say, look, these are what we've got. These are the changes that we've made. Uh, and adopt them, you know, basically we're going to pull them out of regs and we're going to pull them out of the regs. And this, and this is going to be a more of a, a fluid document that we can use because this, you know, this is. It's a good exercise, but it's also very tedious. And it makes it more tedious because we're all, we're not in the same room, you know, so.
Well, I thought that's what we asked before, but I thought you said it would have to be advertised in order to pull them out of the regs.
Well, when you say advertise, like advertise in the.
Advertise as part of the public hearing process that we would be taking them out of the subdivision ranks? That was what I thought you had.
Supermarket sweep, serious from here, hold on. Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's alright.
I just got really excited. I saw a commercial for supermarket sweep.
We are getting tired.
I forgot to mute.
I don't know if I, maybe I misunderstood the question, but I don't, I don't, I'll, and I'll check tomorrow, but I don't, I don't, it just, I don't think so. I mean, we can just, that's what we're doing now. With the public hearing is just, we're going through the regs. And we can just decide as a body at this public hearing that we're taking them out of the, of the.
Oh, well, if we can do that, that'd be great. I thought you had said that it would have to be advertised as such. And since that wasn't part of this advertisement, we couldn't do that.
I'll, I'll double check that. I may have misunderstood the question.
No, but we can. That would be really, everybody would be very thankful. I should ask because it's a public hearing. I don't know. Jennifer, do you see any member of the public out there that needs to comment?
No, there are no public, um, attendees.
Okay, that's great.
We advertise this in the newspaper, correct?
Yes.
As a public, so we have to either.
Continue.
Continue it to a date certain.
Right. Yep, um, I know. So our next meeting is October 6th.
Well, I think you should put it on the regular planning board agenda. And that way we can then take it off the, make, you know, make them, we can actually take it out of the regs at that, you know, proposal to take it out of the regs. That then it'll remove and then you can work on them more, more diligently.
You're saying at the next meeting, also include a vote to, to remove.
Not take these up to the consideration of taking the following checklist out, out of the regs.
Right, because we also, well, we still have, we had subdivision regs amendments as part of this advertisement also. So once we finish the checklist, we're going to do subdivision regs, so we don't want to eliminate everything, so.
But I think that, I mean, the reg, the regulations definitely have to be posted and advertised. You can't pick those out. But the, the checklists are guides. They're not part of, the checklist mirror the regs, right? That's what they're designed to do.
They're part of the regs, I believe.
Right.
They don't have to be. Now they are, but they don't have to be. Most cities and towns, most cities and towns use them as a, as a guide. And they mirror the regs, but they're not in the regs.
But they, they are referenced in the regs, are they not, Mike? As attachment for.
They are, but that's when we, when we revise the regs, we'll take out those references as attachment, blah, blah, blah. And we'll just, you know, a guide. So that's what my suggestion would be because otherwise every time you change it, you've got to go through this process. You get the whole board sitting around, you know, it's not, it's not very productive, to be honest with you.
But on, but on the other hand, Mike, don't the checklists have a little more authority? And a little more credibility and a little more power than if they're in the regulations than if they're not. Because I can see some applicants saying, well, we don't have to pay much attention to the checklist anymore. Because that's not part of their regulations. That's not part of the town of Terre Haute Inns subdivision regulations anymore. So I don't want to, I don't want to weaken the credibility of our checklist by, by taking them out of, out of the regulations. I think they should still be part, and I think that's probably why they were put in there in the first place. To, to, to give them a little more credibility and authority with applicants. So.
I agree with, I agree with Stu.
So I, I just want to pipe in. You will still mention the checklist in the regulations. You, you can say that they will be held in the planning department office. This is what Narragansett does. There are some other towns. And you still have it in the regulations as, you know, referring to checklist. But then we keep track of the checklist, the planning board does through the administrative officer. Rather than having it in your official regulations codified.
I disagree with that.
I do too.
Well, I think what we could do is, is continue this to October 6th and.
So, so I would be happy to make a motion right now to, to continue the public hearing on the checklist. To our next regular monthly meeting of October 6th, 2020.
Alright.
I second the motion.
Alright, I think we need to amend it though to include subdivision regulation. Yeah, checklist and subdivision regulations. That's the public hearing. So if you can amend that motion, Stu.
So, uh, so do we need to also include in the motion the fact that, because we haven't actually opened. The public hearing on the subdivision regulations, have we?
Yeah, I mean, it's all in one because that was all.
So, so then, then my, I would amend my motion to, to include checklists and subdivision regulations. To, to be, uh, continued as a public hearing on October 6th, 2020.
Thank you. Rose, Rosemary, you want to second that? Okay. Second, alright. So I have to do an audible vote. Is there any other discussion? Okay.
I have a question for Jen. Do you, how, that leading on the 6th? I believe, right?
Yep.
Do you know what's going to be on there already? Is there, is it going to be a lengthy meeting? Are we even going to be able to get to this?
There are a few applications on it, yeah. Like Lake Acres Estates is one of them that we never got at the last meeting. And, um. Yeah, there's, I don't know everything yet, but.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know, figure this out and say, okay, if we got three or four items that are going to be on the agenda by the time we get to this again.
Well, odds are we won't get to it on October 6th at our regular meeting. So if, you know, everybody's willing to do. Um, or, or even maybe at that one, we can vote to take it off. Take those out of the public hearing.
And have two meetings.
But we can continue the public hearing for the subdivision regs, so we don't have to re-advertise. But we have to do it to a date certain, so it's easier just to do it when we know when our next meeting is. And then from there, we can go from there. But I think, yeah, we could maybe pull it off, out of the public hearing process at the next meeting.
Okay.
Alright, alright, so we have a first and a second. Any other comments? Okay, so Rosemary?
Yes.
Uh, Stu?
Yes.
Susan? Yes. Amanda?
Yes.
Adam? He's still here? No. Um, Dave?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
So we have one, two, three, four. I think that's six, right? Okay. Alright, thank you. Brian with me? Alright, so. I think that's everything. Alright, so then the next scheduled meeting and adjournment, there was just one comment or one thing I had to bring up. Um, I don't know how far we can go with this because it's not a new agenda item. But I'm looking to see if we can get a quorum for about a five minute meeting for either this Friday at five o'clock. Or Monday at seven o'clock. Um, there's an application that the 90 day time clock is expiring as of. Tuesday. And I'm concerned that if we. And I'm concerned that if we, the, a, a, a letter of, the form was submitted to extend. Do an extension of the time clock, but it hasn't come before the planning board to vote. So I don't, in my. I see it as it's not really valid as yet and I don't want it, it's for the Billswood. Bill Sales, which is a major land development. And I think as a matter of course, we should be voting to approve the request for an extension. And not run the risk of it potentially being approved at the master plan stage by default. And that hasn't even come before, there's been an ad hoc technical review meeting, but it hasn't come before the planning board. We haven't received any of the documents. We haven't received the extension notice request and. This feels in the planning board's best interest to. Hold us another special meeting. Basically, we'd just be a matter of convening, taking the vote to grant the extension. And then dismissing. So I wanted to know, you get five party souls to be available either.
I'm available either date.
Okay. Anybody else available Friday at five or Monday at seven?
I'm in, so.
Okay, for both?
Yeah, the one.
Okay.
I'm in. Rosemary.
Is that you Amanda?
Friday, but I possibly could do Monday.
You can't do Friday?
Yeah, I'm taking my, um, daddy certification.
Okay, you're doing Monday. Okay. Peter, are you available either one?
I'm available the Friday at five, but not the Monday.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Okay, so, alright, so we have Stu, Dave, me, Rosemary and Peter are available at five on Friday. I think we would go with that. I'd just like to get resolved because an agenda would need to be filed tomorrow. I think it's just. Probably better to, to do that, so we just need to get the agenda printed and posted. And then if Jennifer, if you could just make sure that the, the request for the extension. I don't think the applicant needs to appear unless they want to, but I don't think they need to, but we at least, at least need the request for the extension.
The document.
Document, if you can get that, I think email to everybody, it's fine. I'd send it to Amanda as well, even if she's not able to pretend. Send it to all board members. It was just something that kind of slipped through. But anyway, so, alright, I think that's good. And then the next scheduled meeting will be October sixth. So. About, if there's anything else, we'll go ahead and have a motion to adjourn.
Um, Sue, before we adjourn, I'm a little concerned that we're not getting hard paper copies. Of all of the backup materials. There, there seems to have been a kind of a break. And, but I would still like to get hard paper copies of everything, including the agenda. And all of the backup materials that we will need for the October sixth meeting. That's always been our practice and I know I'm old fashioned about that, but I, I think that. As long as we have the personnel who can handle making the copies, I'd rather do that than, you know, have my poor little printer. Try to print everything out.
I do not want copies, hard copies. I prefer the digital copies. It's easier for me to flip through on the computer than how.
Not everybody has to have hard copies. I'm just saying that personally.
Everybody has their own preferences. I don't know if Tara, if it's easier for you, if everybody gets back to you, if they want hard copies. I don't know if that would be confusing or if you just automatically print off hard copies for everybody.
I think she could. She would know who wants hard copies and who doesn't. Not sure what happens to with the hard copies, but.
It buggers all the time. They don't have a printer.
Pick them up at town hall at a meeting. She has a packet ready every meeting.
Alright, well, right now, as it stands right now, Amanda's the only one that's not asking from the board for. And I don't know, Tara, if you don't mind, just the other people that are missing tonight. Just reach out to them and ask them if they want hard copies of all the documents every meeting or if electronic are okay with them. Just so then you can keep your checklist and then who wants and who doesn't, simply play your life. And save some paper.
Just a clarifying question for the Friday meeting. Will there be a Zoom notice sent or how?
Yeah, so tomorrow, yeah, Tara will get out the Zoom, Zoomy, Zoomy and the very brief agenda, sorry. Yeah, it'll be a special meeting. Cause it'll be within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, so it just needs to get posted tomorrow.
Just a heads up, I won't be at the November meeting. I'll be on holiday.
So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Second.
Privileged motion. You don't have to second it.
So nine fifty-two by this clock. Okay.